Dexter City Council meeting of November twenty seventh, hope everyone had a nice Thanksgiving. I'd like to call the meeting to order at seven o'clock and ask that you stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the state of Alabama. And to the public who stands on behalf of the county. Neither this law nor the American justice system.
Alden, here. Griffin, here. Hubbard, here. Shlaugh, here.
Here.
Sammy Pharoah.
Here.
You.
Here.
Turner Lee.
Here.
Heeding, here.
Okay, thank you for that. Now, I M C has approved of the meeting minutes on our council work session on November thirteen. And then we also have meeting minutes for our city council meeting to follow up on. What can I give you, maybe more than please?
Oh, if you're the focus of the band.
Go by Griffin, thank you, Jamie. Second, second by Sammy Pharoah, thank you, Joe. Thank you, Stephanie, and you thought, yeah, Joe, you know, thank you. Other couple numbers, they count some of them. Okay. Jerry, please call the vote to Google the meeting.
Sammy Pharoah.
Yes.
Alden, yes. Hubbard, yes. Griffin, yeah. Shlaugh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes. Motion carries, meetings are approved. We have two people that have asked to be on prearranged participation this evening. First is a presentation from our recreation coordinator, Mary Ann Webb, our farmer's market and community garden and the season reports. Welcome, Mary Ann.
Hi. Want me to stand like this, or?
That's my idea.
No, please, don't please speak this way.
Okay.
And we have, remember, we have that in our package.
Oh, all right, yes, I'm Mary Ann Webb, I, uh, my second year managing the farmer's market and my first year doing the community garden. So I put a report in, I can just go over the highlights, I don't even know the biggest ones on the night. There's a lot of pictures that I put in there and then, uh, put in, um, the produce that we had. That's our nice, what else, I can put in, we went out. There's my contact information. Um, and that addition. And then I just pull out snapshots of our produce and flowers, I take pictures of, you know, all the markets and put it on social media and I uh, the next page is a lot about what we had at the market. And the next page is our meat vendors and some people shopping at the market. And a lot of our baked goods and some craft fixtures. And then I do send a newsletter out every week and I put your our vendor list in there and I, I do it in the winter too, I just do a smaller version and I put some Dexter events in. And, uh, we participated in some food assistance programs and we were able to help Dexter's citizens purchase over two thousand dollars in fresh local food. The majority of this was from the senior market buck program, which is for seniors over sixty. And I put in the attendance here and our Tuesday market was, uh, only June to September this year and our Saturday market was May to October. We had about ten thousand people come through, which was less than the year before. But like I said, our Tuesday market was decreased. I also, we did have a lot of Saturdays that rained a lot more than the season before. And I think, um, and we had less produce this year, we had issues with our farms, some weather issues, stamping issues, um, one farm got light, it was fogged on the farm, so, um, we did have lots of produce, I'd like to recruit some more farms next year, um, but our income and fees, uh, did go off about a thousand dollars from the year before. So we did have a lot of vendors coming in the market, but we had a lot of, um, we did have some produce, baked goods, meat, honey, but a lot of craft vendors, so I, I really want to keep it as a, you know, not have more craft vendors than farms. So that's my goal is to recruit more farms like here. Part of our hours are the same as, as Ann Arbor and Chelsea and one of our farmers got into Ann Arbor, so I'm gonna start recruiting now, uh. Oh, so there we go, there's our, we have about twenty vendors average on Saturday, Tuesday, I would see five was the top, um, the Tuesday market did not go as well as I would like it to have, it has been going down, um, the problem is we don't get a lot of customers and then we have new vendors, they don't wanna stay because we don't have a lot of customers, so it's it's a tough one. I don't know that Dexter needs to be in the market. And that's our Instagram and Facebook likes, I've tried to post a lot on social media. And we did a lot of advertising with the Sun Times and other papers this year. And these are some highlight pictures of our events we did, we have a scavenger hunt for kids and um, we had a Halloween parade, we had a pottery person and we did get, uh, three grants this year too for the market, we had a kid event and uh, another grant we're gonna use for next year, um, it's gonna be geared more towards it's gonna be seventh to seventeenth, um, they'll get money to spend at the market. And we also got one through the Michigan Farmers Association, we got a food safety grant. Um, that's our social media page here, okay. And we had a really big explosion of kids' business this year. Um, we had so many kids wanting to come, which is great because they bring a lot of families, um, and they get to learn how to sell the market and there was some really creative kids, I was really impressed. Um, and then I put a lot of our events in there that we did in Davidson, uh, painted a mural at the market, uh, we had some garden club sales and like I already mentioned, a lot of that free bike maintenance there in main June, we had music every Saturday. That's a big draw too. There's some of our musicians, we had Ann Arbor Symphony come white and, uh, some people in there. And I put in some cus, I do send a customer survey and a vendor survey and I put some of the comments in there, I won't go over all of them, but, um, a lot of people want more produce. And some ideas for next year, I'm, you all, these are some of my ideas, um, recruit more, like I said, recruit more farms, um. Possibly cancel the Tuesday market. But thank you, I, oh, and I did get my market manager for a petition this year. So, um, that's our banner too, so I wanted to thank everyone for letting me run the market again.
You brought a lot of energy to it.
Thank you, I tried. Any questions?
So you're recommending this to, to eliminate Tuesday? I think we tried to change hours, right, last, last year or this year or?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we, we did change, uh, hours this year, um, we adjusted it.
Up in the day?
Uh, up, up in the day, um, to match with some of the other markets, um. And that makes, yeah.
We only did, the problem, like, I try to count the customers when I'm there, but, um, you know, average of forty, whereas on Saturday we can get four hundred.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know, I, I, I don't wanna be the bearer of that news, but I don't know what else to do this day or at night.
Oh, that's pretty good.
Well, I just have, what, did the previous, um, tornado try putting it in, uh, Monument Park on Tuesday and I, I don't know if it was you or the previous tornado and I was wondering when was that not successful?
Yeah, so, so, um, we, we, we have done, uh, Monument Park, uh, a couple of times, both, um, Tuesdays and there is kind of a, just interspersed whenever we get to that end. Um, and I, I think, you know, I think Mary Ann can speak to that better than I can, but I didn't think.
Yeah, we did do it, um, uh, Tuesday, I, I think it's a great idea because it gets exposure, I, I think being by the libraries, I mean, I love the pavilion, it's beautiful, we invested in that. It's just kind of off the beaten path, I feel like it should be more visible or somehow more advertising, um. So the Tuesday did go, but sometimes there are only three vendors and one of the vendors never wanted to do it, um. Not like we're gonna pick everyone, but, um, I thought it was a good idea to do it down there. If we could, we'll do it there.
Something to think about, wow.
Yeah, something else, I mean, I think in general, thinking about when we could relocate the entire farmer's market to be more visible is something that we could think about. But also, if, I guess my question to you would be, if we were to eliminate the Tuesday farmer's market, what would you do to sort of make up for that cancellation to enhance the Saturday we did?
Yeah, that's what I think, well, like I said, there's only one vendor or two vendors that went on Tuesday that didn't go on Saturday and they're both farms, I hope that they were coming on Saturday and then we could have more farm, that was my idea, um.
I, I'm sorry, let me, is, is there any way you could like, think more creatively about it though and say if those people weren't able to be there on Saturday, is there, is there a way to still bring their goods to the market on Saturday? In, in like a less official way, I, I don't know, I'm just, I'm just trying to think, if you are gonna eliminate one day a week, again, how do we enhance the day of the week that we have to make it more viable, like more?
Right, that, that's what I might go with, possibly more balance for kids, I, I think when the kids come and families come, um, it's a good idea or you have giveaways or just the main thing is more produce, I think, that's what I think, and location, those are my opinions being there. Uh, maybe more advertising, when I did Facebook groups that helped a lot, um.
So just in, in our timeline, when do we need to make a decision about dates for the market?
Uh, so typically we start putting the application out in February, March.
Yeah, yeah, we can talk more.
I can think about it, I can decide on that, then late January or thereabouts.
Okay.
Do you have a little report to give on the community garden, I think, too?
Oh, yes, yes. So this was my first year, uh, doing the garden and I put some pictures in there, we had, we have fourteen full plots and uh, almost all of them were full, we had two full plots that weren't rented and two half plots, I think it's, uh, um, we tried to run them all, but, um, we did do about the same as the year before and our mayor had the plot there. And, uh, I thought it went good, we started in meetings in May and we ended almost right October, uh, because we did have another warm spurt there. So I put in here all of the vegetables, one, actually one gardener was talking about we need to becoming a vendor of the market, so there's an idea. Um, okay. Those are some pictures of all things growing. And yeah, all the things.
It was a good year for growing, if you tried.
Yeah, yeah. It was good. And then it got warmer when I said it that, then we also sent out a survey, um, for the garden too as well, uh, we actually got one more survey back after we got about nine surveys back, um. And those are all the things that were grown, there's a lot and, um, they shared with others, a hundred plus pounds and how many people, so if there are only a hundred people, we're, so it's a great community of sharing the produce. And those are some comments, uh, maybe making the sense bigger, I don't know if you want me to go over all these, but, but the comments are the packet, um, staying on top of the weeds is a problem too, so we're gonna see if we can get some help with that and maybe, um, one of our farm vendors could help with questions that they have on.
Again, I appreciate all the energy you put into both this as well as the farmer's market, they're, they're well organized and the reports at the end of the year, I appreciate it, I enjoyed reading the content.
Oh, good, thank you, yeah, there's a lot more detail in the packet.
Thank you, good job.
Oh, thank you for your time.
Our next, uh, member under prearranged participation this evening is David Love from Design Baker Holding LLC. Good evening.
Good evening. Good to be here. I'm going to read a statement and then I'll make a few unscripted comments and I've brought copies of what I'm reading tonight. I'm here tonight to request the development of a new course of pathway regarding the consideration of the Sloan Kingsley forty-five acre annexation request. As you are aware, Syo Township's board has passed a resolution stating that the annexation does not meet their open space and pathway goals. Further stating that they will not be discussing the matter until such time that Dexter brings them a specific proposal in favor of an annexation. Effectively, they've ended the process of the two municipalities considering the matter. Which leaves the question, does Dexter provide sufficient merit in the annexation request to warrant further work and study? I certainly hope so. And I'm here to offer our continued cooperation and collaboration in a new process to get all the information you will need in order to decide whether to support making a proposal to Syo Township. I believe there would be a logical order to the new process. One, we need to complete the water and sewer capacity studies and determine the feasibility of residential development on the proposed annexation parcel. Two, take steps necessary to determine whether the annexation parcel can provide a new municipal water well for Dexter. We continue to be committed to providing the location for a well. Three, complete any additional fact finding needed with direction from the city such as the impacts on natural features, transportation infrastructure, or traffic studies. Four, further review the potential benefits for Dexter of residential development on the annexation parcel. This should include a financial analysis of the city's projected revenues and expenses. In Michelle Annual's report in your packet, she included language for potential motions. I don't believe you are ready to make a firm motion to make an annexation proposal to Syo. Michelle also included language for a conditional motion, it's on page three thirty-seven of your packet. The four items I listed above are my objections for someone with content of a conditional motion. I also respect the fact that crafting a motion takes time and likely greater detail than I've suggested. What I'm hoping to accomplish tonight is a consensus around the idea of spending the next few months in fact finding with open collaboration to determine the viability of the annexation and its potential benefits. Doing so in an orderly, planned, and cooperative way. This process will allow you to decide whether to make a proposal to Syo for logical planned growth of the city. I have copies of those remarks for all of you. Thank you for bringing them. Further deliberations really should be a matter for the entire council. I do wanna thank the three members, uh, on the person, Alden, Hubbard, and Sammy Pharoah, also Michelle Annual. We went through four meetings, with, I suspect that times were frustrating. Uh, four meetings would probably be a lot of additional time and effort. Thank you for that. Regarding Syo's open space and pathways objection, and I have formally raised this objection with the Syo board and with Syo's subcommittee. It's vague and it really doesn't offer specific objections. And in terms of the facts, what we have offered Syo in terms of land preservation is a hundred and five acres, more than forty percent of the Sloan Kingsley property. That includes ninety percent of the weblands. The remaining weblands are on the annexation parcel. Those will be protected in the development we designed. It includes all of the Mill Creek fronted in the flood plain west side of Baker Road. And it includes a hundred percent, other than some tree line trees, a hundred percent of the woodlands on the property. Significant mature woods. It also that's all. It also, uh, our, our plans include two trailhead access points. Uh, one in the annexation parcel.
Oh, sorry about that.
On the annexation parcel and one on the many hands, uh, campus, uh, proposal to be developed in Syo. So fundamentally, we seriously disagree with the single objection that Syo has raised, uh, to the annexation proposal. I'm here tonight without my technical advisor, Tom Coburn from Midwestern Consulting, he's also a member of your planning commission. Uh, I don't wanna get into a lot of technical stuff tonight without Tom's wisdom. But I do wanna say that it's pretty clear to us as we look back at history, that when the Dexter Crossing development was planned, potential annexation of part of Sloan Kingsley was part of their planning in the way they designed the roads and the way they stubbed the streets into the, into the parcel, uh, in, into our land, uh. So I think your community has already planned for additional development on the Sloan Kingsley property. What we're proposing is much smaller than some of what has been discussed previously. I recognize after these many months, you'll probably getting sick of seeing me here, uh, that we threw a lot at the two communicators and there are a lot of pieces and parts and certainly a lot of concerns and questions have been raised. I come to you as the local developer ready to cooperate and collaborate and listen to the objections. I think there's value in that as opposed to some of the developers who come before you. I want to talk for a minute about the housing affordability crisis in Washington County. There is one. Told you previously, I'm forty-nine years old with the Reinhardt Real Estate Firm. Housing is more expensive today than it's been at any time in my forty-nine years. And middle-class families and individuals are getting priced out the real estate market or pushed out geographically to places much further from where they worked and so forth. Your superintendent of schools tells me his staff and young teachers can't live in Dexter because of that affordability question. In the, in the packet is some of the information we shared around conceptual development layouts and different kinds of product. I think it would be something unlike anything else that's being developed in Dexter at the moment. Uh, when you look at this crisis of affordability, there are three leaders in the county. Ann Arbor is the most expensive, followed closely by Saline and Dexter. And the, uh, information is in your packet about what's happened to the average sale price of real estate in Dexter's school and so forth, I won't read that for all that. So I wanna be the developer of attainable housing. Housing for middle-class home buyers. The examples we shared at the subcommittee, uh, meeting a couple, three weeks ago ranged from two hundred and eighty thousand a unit to three hundred and fifty thousand a unit. It's due, we got accurate pricing on the products. Those are today's dollar quotes. If you try to reproduce the sorts of housing in Dexter's property, those prices will start at five hundred thousand and go higher from there. So we're trying to fill a gap in the marketplace. I wanna make just a comment to compliment Sammy Pharoah who raised questions, concerns about specifications. We will answer any and all questions you have, councilman, uh. I think, you know, figuring out utilities possibly will before we get into the detail of those specifications. But we will one hundred percent cooperate, I know Tom Coburn sent you a bit of additional information. If you want more information, feel free to raise it or we will try to get it for you. That's it, thanks for your attention, happy to answer questions.
Uh, first and foremost, I would like to say something that was not said in all of that, which Tom Coburn, who is on our planning commission, routinely recuses himself for any discussion regarding this at planning commission, so I don't want there to be any thought within the public that there's any sort of implication that there's any sort of lack of transparency happening there. Um, I sit on the planning commission as the, uh, representative from city council and I can assure you that Tom leaves the room. Can we discuss anything related to anything that he is involved with professionally? And I just want that to be for the record and to be very clear to everyone who's here tonight. Um, also, I don't think that the superintendent of schools is the only person who has said that we need more attainable housing, I will, I have said it at this table, I know councilor Michelle has said it at this table. There are probably others of you that have said it, but I'm not gonna put words in your mouth right now because I can't recall specifically. I, I've said it many times, our teachers, our fire guard is obviously dependent here, all of that aside, I don't think, we still don't have enough information here that proves that this is gonna be attainable for those people. Um, and that is my opinion, that's not a question, it's just something I wanted to get out, once we move the transparency thing, especially as someone who's sat on the subcommittee. Um, it's, it's a lot more complicated and, you know, as we sit here tonight debating something that is within our city limits that we don't have a choice but to talk about, it's hard to prioritize something else, that's not already within our city limits, especially with the, um, amount of public opposition that we've heard to any development, period.
Very good, we do have an agenda item in three, plan for a discussion, uh, more about this later on the agenda, so thank you for coming tonight, thank you for passing out what your remarks were and stick around, please. Okay, we've completed our pre-arranged participation, so we're onto the non-arranged participation portion of the agenda. Uh, this is an opportunity for people in the audience to speak on any topic, should they want to, whether the item is on the agenda or off the agenda. Um, if you would like to speak this evening, kindly raise your hand, we'll call on you one on one at a time, I'll ask you to come up and state your name and your full address for the record, so we can record that, who's speaking, and we ask you to keep your comments to five minutes or less. Uh, we'll start with the in-person folks and then once we're done here, since we've got some folks online, we'll pick online comments as well, Josh, I'll let you start looking for hands, if people are interested in speaking online, you can uh, use the raise hand feature to let us know that you're interested in speaking and when we, um, get done with the in-room comments, we'll blow the online comments. So with that, is there anyone who would like to speak this evening? All right, I'm gonna start from the front and work my way to the back, if that's okay, for our audience, please. Well. And Jerry, if you don't get your name, just hopefully we can actually get to it by then.
My name is Lindsay Akers, I live at the 556 Cartridge Drive in Dexter, Michigan. Uh, in the Westridge neighborhood. I live in Westridge, as I just stated, and I guess twenty-one years ago when my house was built, um, there was pushback from the community over this development. Any piece of land development can be subject to public disapproval, disapproval, excuse me. And tonight's discussion is centered around a very small and difficult parcel of land that people feel very passionate about. And has a lengthy, complex history, which I just recently learned quite a bit about. I've only lived here for two years. I am here tonight to voice my opposition of the pound and the developers desire to rezone as a PUD. As conditions and criteria listed in the zoning ordinance are not met. Also, this development is not well aligned with the city's master plan. Many from the local and greater community are outraged at this proposed development. And has spoken out at various meetings, as you guys all know. A week ago, after the planning commission meeting, I started a petition to help unify and add volume to our voices. As of today, the petition has around six hundred signatures and is steadily, steadily growing. I honestly, when I started it, I was hoping that maybe I would get about twenty five. I didn't realize it would be six hundred within a week. But I think that speaks volumes about the pound, how people feel. And if anything, it demonstrates how strongly community members are against this. So here's the core of the argument. On page thirty five of the master plan, it states that the city is to continue a traditional neighborhood development pattern. At a scale complementary to the rural, small town character of the city. As well as thoughtful road management policies key to the sustainability of the city and its small town characters. This is Para Cruz. The pound also threatens to drastically alter the essential character of the surrounding area. A standard to be met by the proposed PUD according to what is laid out on page three hundred and sixty in our zoning ordinance. So the question is, what is the current essential character of the surrounding area? Mill Creek and Iggy's and Park are a collective sanctuary for residents seeking peace amongst nature and beauty. A quiet place to recreate woods, creek, family's nature. This sums up the area. There's picnic tables which provide a, a place to quietly read a book from the library. Or eat a slice of pizza from the cottage inn or gather with family on a Sunday afternoon. Very pleasant picture. Um, there are no high-rise, high-density residential units in this immediate area adjacent to the creek. And although the Jeffords, Jefford Street and Grandview Commons condominiums are across the way and down the creek. They sit far back from the boardwalk and the public space and not in this unique traffic setting. Erupting not just one, but two, four-story, high-density units will destroy the essential character of this region. The beauty of Mill Creek's bank should be preserved and the park should not be encroached upon from these massive brick and mortar beasts. Of course, this park is not just for us Dexter citizens, but for our welcome visitors who enjoy the trail system and parks. They visit and spend money at our local businesses who are hard at work and essential for our town come to continuously thrive. But all of this prosperity is jeopardized due to this project. Why? Local residents are already saying the traffic here is too much. And they're avoiding shopping, visiting and shopping and stopping in this area. This at times I hate to say includes myself. Adding around twenty eight units with fifty parking spots in an area that is already. A bottleneck of congested vehicles trying to make their way under the narrow bridge will most certainly turn the road into a parking lot. A roundabout will not help this as it cannot safely speed up traffic under the bridge. Indeed, if you live in Dexter, you are well aware of the lengthy daily commute. Which I become aware of just a couple of years ago. Missing that window of opportunity traveling uh, through this region will most certainly cause you to be late dropping your kids off at school. Or getting to work. And knowingly adding traffic in this area is not a demonstration of minimizing adverse traffic impacts. As stated in the zoning ordinance as a club requirement on page three hundred and forty seven. This is just not workable. At the planning commission meeting, a landscape member of the development team spoke about invasive species on the property. Backaloga's trees, blood thorns and so on. These trees pale in comparison to the real invasive species threatening our creek. Which are high-rise, high-density residential units. The pound is the nastiest one of them all given its location, crowding out the park, choking out the traffic. Distracting from the natural beauty and destroying our small town charm. Adding noise, light and air pollutants and possibly posing even a greater risk to the surrounding wildlife. Which eagle will, you know, get part of that. Bullying trees is an easy way to mitigate invasive species, but we cannot pull high-rises once they're in place. And the only way to stop them is to not let them in. In conclusion, I understand that this parcel of land is zoned as village commercial and meant to be developed. Not a community space. It's not the argument here. Other proposals such as the livery, restaurant and brewery have not worked out for various reasons. This does not mean that high-density condos, high-rises are the right option and a PUD should be. Not granted for the reasons I detailed. I recognize that there may be a demand for housing in our area, affordable housing. Given the presentation that the man had we have saved, but this property is not for that. In conclusion, our community pleads with the members of council to not approve this project or zoning requests. I know that this parcel is a tremendous challenge and I trust that you can find a better option. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments this evening.
That's the other position of the names.
Just hand it over here, please. Did you see that? Thank you. Who was back with their hand up? I saw someone there. Let's come on down. Follow.
My name is Sally Pope. I live at five, nine, seven, five Dexter Beaton Road. I'm a lifetime resident of Dexter. I've lived here long enough to watch twenty one subdivisions get built and three hundred and twelve condos within three miles of town. And coming soon. More. Since two thousand, the density of Dexter has doubled. The average age here is thirty eight. The average income is a hundred and ten thousand. The birth rate in Washtenaw County is going down. The birth rate for the state of Michigan is going down. Less people are moving. So in direct to the condos. My question is, did the fire truck issue get resolved? Did, did that happen? Um, and was this rezoned to residential because it was commercial, right? And how many variances did this company get to, to put for this model of condos? This is some questions. I was very disappointed that the planning commission passed it. People come to Dexter because we have good schools. It's a quiet, safe place to put down roots. I wondered if it was just me because I'm old and I watched all this happen. So I went down and I sat on the border to border trail. I talked to a hundred Dexter residents. And I had a picture of the condos and I just said, this is what they want to build right there. What do you think? Not one, not one person said, oh, this is the best. There are two to three bedroom condos. Are you going to raise a family in one of them? No, because when the kid gets to be sixteen, we won't have parking spot for them. So who's going to live in the empty nesters? And they're going to what? Walk up the hill to go downtown Dexter? Because the big hill. Or the young professionals? They're going to move here and what? Be bored with the nightlife we don't have? This is a community of families and that's the way it's always been. If you want a condo, Green, Green Commons still has almost half of theirs for sale. And there's three hundred of condos in Dexter. This would change the look of Dexter, would affect everybody driving through Dexter. Or walking down the border to border trail. I personally do not drive to Dexter anymore because it's so congested. I find a way around it. And I'm not the only one because I rode with somebody else recently. I said, where are you going? Said, we don't drive through town anymore. I said, well, I understand. I don't either. Now, what would be the solution for this? Can the city buy the land? Can we do a, a millage where the whole community buys the land? Can we hunt down a business that's kids friendly? We don't have anything in town that you can take your kids to and have fun. The guys that bought this land, they don't deserve not to be able to sell it. And I think we should help them. But I wanted to add, just thank you for that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Back our right, right. I dropped my phone. I just wanted to wake everybody up. My name is Rhonda. Two zero four five Jan and Dial Township. Nineteen seventy two resident, moved here from, uh, New York nineteen seventy two. Nineteen seventy four graduate Dexter High School, eighteen year member of the Dexter Board of Education. And I'm sorry, housing is so high here that only because of the good schools. I'm sorry.
Please, please address to the front.
So, uh. I hate to say, hate to bring this village up or the city up, but Chelsea, Chelsea has an excellent. Middle of the city on the south side of town on N fifty two, old factory site. That never was a discussion for condominium, parkland. It's going to be a park. They're going to have a roller, they're going to have a skateboard park, they're going to have basketball, they're going to have a pickleball court. Right in the middle of town between, I'm sure you have all seen this, they've got federal funding on it, they've got state funding. It's right between, uh, Lincoln and Summit right across from, uh, gas station and old factory that's going to be a park. I don't understand why you don't expand Mill Creek Park to this side of the river. Or this side of the creek. It makes all sense in the world. You have more space. You're going to lose some of the parkland when you build a fire station. I think they're wrong, you're going to lose some. You're not going to get around that. You're going to build where it is now. You're going to lose some of the parkland. Expand the park. Uh, the lady mentioned the family service area. Hey, that'd be great. Build a little building over there where the kids can go to play twenty-four, seven, three hundred and six, four days out of the year. It just makes no sense to build condos there when you've got plenty of condos in town. Prior to, uh, uh, people have commented, they had excellent points as far as who's going to live there. You certainly can't have a child, can't have a family of two or three and they're going to have cars where they're going to park. They're going to get, going to get a kayak and go up and down the creek to a, to a, to a parking lot up the creek. No, they're not. So it just makes no sense to build the traffic, everything else. I went underneath that bridge for twenty-two years. It's a whole lot worse now than it was twenty-two years ago. So, uh, I lived in Dexter before there was a life Dexter, Chelsea Road and Island Lake. I've been here a long time. So I reconsider, make it a park, expand the park. You're going to lose parkland when you build a fire station. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Others in the audience, yes, ma'am. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Sternstein. I live at three, two, four, nine East Ridge Drive. Um, and I wanted to comment briefly about the post-chung condominium project as well. Um, a person made a business decision to purchase a piece of property that unfortunately could not be developed in what he had planned. And I do think it's unfortunate. I think some of the original ideas were wonderful and unfortunately it didn't work out. But that does not mean that the land needs to be rezoned and developed into something that detracts. From the beautiful nature area that we have that's enjoyed by both residents and by visitors. That adds to an already heavy traffic area of Dexter. That peers directly into the backyards of some of our existing residents in the subdivision right behind it. That potentially would add to the train noise in that subdivision from the very tall structure that we built there. I've heard it could add to taxpayer cost to fund a different kind of fire truck that would be able to, um, service a building that is that tall in Dexter. And reduces the available land for expanding businesses in Dexter. Please don't force the residents of this city to pay for one person's business decision that didn't turn out the way he planned. Please require this land to remain commercial and help Dexter to move forward in a positive direction for our future. Thank you for your time.
Members in the audience. Yes, sir. Hello, I'm Phil Poppen. I live at eight, five, five, six Cartridge Drive. And, well, thank you. I'm also in opposition to the, uh, development. Um, I think it's a ill-conceived. Uh, idea and I also think it's inappropriate for the space. I'm not against the, um. Development, not against the housing. I just think this is a terrible place for it. And again, I think. Maybe we haven't come up with what is the next thing for this space, but I think this is inappropriate use of this space. I moved here two years ago with my kids from Man Arbor. When the exact same thing was happening down the street from me, urban density, they were putting up. You know, thousands of, uh, different condo units, uh, that were available and it totally changed the neighborhood and everything else. Changed the traffic and I've been coming here for about twenty-five years before that. I've watched Dexter change a lot and I always wanted to live here. And that's why I brought my kids here. This is a small historic town and again, people move here for the same reasons that I move here. For the space, for the pace. For the small community. I'm from a small town in northern Michigan originally. And I wanted my kids to grow up in the same kind of environment that I grew up in. As others have said, the PUD proposal. Based on the information that we saw, didn't seem to address the standards for the PUD. Especially the section that talks about not changing the essential character of the surrounding area. The character of the surrounding creek. It doesn't have these high-rise condos located next to the bank. Nor next to the trail anywhere moving along through Dexter. All this existing housing is set back in these areas. The developer also asked for many waivers, the PUD standards. The master plan for Dexter talks about the downtown intent on page thirty-eight. It talks about the historic commercial center. It talks about, um, the intensity of those uses. And it also talks about preserving the small town character in the downtown. When the developer was here, they talked specifically about the industrial-inspired design. That to me is not preserving the small town character of the mill and of the Mill Creek. And again, if you look at the, the drawing and how it actually encroaches onto the bank. And again, they were asking for, um. Some waivers to those setbacks to get it, um, you know, because it's very close to the creek, closer than the PUD standards. Again, this is not the spot for this project. And again, it will destroy the small town character. The downtown intent of the master plan continues. The downtown intent of the master plan continues on to talk about, um, diversity of products and services, and again, the rezoning here. We have a lot of condos. Already, they haven't sold. Do we need these other ones here? And again, we hear arguments about, well, we need, uh, all different types of housing for all different kinds of people. Well, coming from Ann Arbor, near the river, I can tell you that this is one, if this property is built, this is going to be the most sought-after property where I can take the canoe right from, or the kayak, right from my condo and launch it. Where else can I do that on this creek as I move along this corridor? So again, I can see there are members of the council that are, you know, visibly moved by my discussion here. And again, if I'm getting things wrong, um, well, the records will show such things. Um, it also talks about the continued maintenance of the historic buildings and new buildings echoing the historic character. And again, this project, the poem, is not echoing the historic character of the downtown. So in conclusion, I'd like to just again say that I'm not against development. I think that development can be very good for a community coming from a small town. I think, again, it can really help to enliven a downtown community. However, we need to be very vigilant about the kinds of projects that we decide to approve. And again, as others have said, related to invasive kinds of species, we can't just go and remove these things once we've made these decisions. These are gonna last for generations and generations. And again, when we think about ourselves, these buildings will outlive us. And I think, again, there'll be better opportunities, and we owe it to ourselves and our children's children to make the hard choice here and to pass on this development until something better comes along. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. All the hands in the room. Yes, please. There's two in the back. Oh, go ahead. Thank you. I thought I saw him behind you. Okay.
Hello, my name is Michelle Santi. I live at nine four seven Weston Bach Road in Dexter. I didn't come prepared to speak today. But as I listened to the commentary, the brilliant commentary about what this proposal will do to this community. The one thing I've not heard discussed is the effect of this hard state, the structure, the parking lot on the creek itself. When you look at the plans, you can visibly see there are three culverts that are to drain water into the creek. It is not possible during a rain event or a snowmelt event without water to not affect the creek, the banks, the speed at which the water will flow, and obviously the habitat within the creek. It's something, I don't know how the zoning board addressed it, or it has been addressed. It should be looked at because we as humans continue to destroy the environment rather than addressing the needs of what is existing in lieu of building a structure. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. All, all the hands in the room.
Welcome, Beth. All right.
Good, how are you? I'm Beth Chamberlain. I live at seventeen oh one Baker Road, Dexter. Well, as you know, there are so many people here that do not want this. If you guys in style, you stick to your master plans, like we've already, I fight with style with this thing. They say eighty houses or whatever it is you wanna eat up. Everything. You guys stick to the plan. That's what the plans are with. That's why they were made. They weren't made for y'all to change to your relatives. You guys want this kind of development, go somewhere that's established development. There's lots of places. Nobody, Norville, Brighton. Come on. And then when, when he said that about Chelsea, you, we, okay, everybody, you're Dexter. We've always been secondhand to Chelsea. Somebody called us rich people. No, we weren't the rich people. The Chelsea people were the rich people. My sister is over there for thirty-five years. They were the rich people. We were the poor people. And look at us today. Here they are building this absolutely phenomenal. They have the most beautiful, uh, uh, um, farmer's market. They have probably got nine hundred vendors and probably more than half of them are farms. That's where they're going. Where do you think they're going? They're not gonna go into Dexter. You guys don't want us out of everything. There's nowhere to park. I just said to my friend, I went down to the farmer's market to buy something specific. And I drove by, I'm like, I'm not even gonna fight the traffic. And I'm gonna go there, I'll just wait for her to come to me when she did the following week, she was at my back. So just stick to the plans. I'm coming. You, you, you drive through that viaduct every day. Isn't that ridiculous? And then you get some idiot that wants to stop and wait for. And now you put up a service, it's like, well, it's probably better than nobody pays attention. At least we don't. This says you're supposed to stop on this side of the viaduct and let the people come through. Well, okay, because I got twenty minutes to get to work and I left a half hour early. And the whole thing about this tax thing, that's all you guys want for anyways, is sixty-five dollars. More money for Dexter, you know? And again, y'all know, my kid can't even afford to live here, and he works for you folks. And my other kid had to move to Munich. If you don't know where Munich is, it's on the other side of Jackson. His wife is a teacher at Dexter. Yeah, so they hate, they have to drive, she drives almost four, five minutes. And in the winter, she has to go hours to get to Dexter so she can. How much does it, until her dad dies, which he's old, he'll die, and then maybe they're gonna end up with property, which I'm sure they will. But then how much does it cost them to build a house here? The taxes and everything else. It's pathetic. And you guys need to stop trying to figure out the master plan of your own. Because there is a master plan, and there's a master plan for Style Township. And I applaud every time when Sio and I call him, you are sticking to the master plan. Yep, we are. Good, because that's across the street from my house too. And, and I asked, oh, what's his name? He goes, please come sit in my driveway and try to get out of my driveway in the morning. Because you know what? You can't turn left. You have to go right, and then you have to go down Marshall Road and come up Parker Road and come up Shield Road to get to Dexter. You have this, hey, go somewhere. There's lots of places to go, you guys. Lots. Clinton? Uh, or not Clinton, but like all those places out there. They're all, they're all, they're all available. Plymouth, Levonia. Hey, so what, so what, you want all this big, big stuff? Go for it. But as you can tell, people in Dexter don't want this. Literally, we've had that sign. I cannot believe we had six hundred people sign that petition in four days. What's that say? And I bet you there's more on it right now, if you wanna look at it. And I did too, go down to the park and show people that, and they're like, you're kidding me. You're, what, what? Are they serious? Yeah, that's seriously, you people, you people. People that are from, uh, Clinton said to us, oh my gosh, you're kidding me. My grandma lives here. We've been coming here. I don't know. This is what they wanted to do. So it's that thing.
And our hands in the audience. Please.
My name is Renee Wim, and I live at nine eight six zero Fleming Road in Dexter. And I've been a resident of Dexter for twenty years. I lived in Chelsea and I stumbled on this great little town when I was working for a florist and delivering flowers. And I had to deliver flowers at the West, Westridge Community, and I, that's how I discovered Dexter. And I'm very, very fortunate to, um, be a member of this community. I really like it here. So, um, uh, somebody had told me, uh, that he was at the last, um, planning commission meeting, uh, I think it was in September. And he said the developer of the condos got up and said, uh, we don't want to build something that Dexter doesn't want. Well, we don't want it, right? And there's more people who don't want it, as we know, with the petition. Thanks, Renee, for that petition. Um, it's also in the recording of the meeting that this gentleman got up and said that. Now, I met Nate, is one of the owners of the, of the land there. In twenty sixteen, I think he bought it in twenty fifteen, him and another guy. And, um, he kinda shared with me his plans, the library, and maybe a beer barato. And then he also said, you know, we might, maybe we'll, we'll put an ice skating rink. And bells were going off in my head. It's just like, community, community, all this stuff for the community. And I, I DJ on the side. I said, I'll leave a DJ for the ice skating rink, you know, I'll be the DJ for you for free. I said, I'll do it for free. So I was so excited. And I know that they cleaned up, they ripped down a building, cleaned up the buildings and cleaned up the poison from the gunshots or from the lead from the guns or whatever. And then to have the rug pulled out from under them. I mean, I don't know the whole story after that. Who did that? Their Nate's idea, is Nate here tonight?
No, he's right here on the screen, you know.
He's on the line.
Hi, Nate. So it was such a great idea, Nate. And I'm so sorry. And but I understand what you're going through now, and I don't blame you. You wanna get out of Dexter. Yeah, good for you. You're done. After how you were treated? Having that pulled out from underneath you? And then now we got a deal. I'm sorry, I don't agree with the condo thing, and I've been fighting it to getting the information out to the community members. But, uh, if we can, that would have benefited in the community because that would have given jobs. There would be jobs for the young people in the community, or some of us older people, sixty-five, I still wanna work. So.
Renee, I have to just, um, be a part of your, your discussion tonight a little bit. Um, as I understand it, uh, Nate was trying to do, set up a kayak business, canoe library, as you call it. Are you aware that he actually decided to purchase Skip's?
Yeah.
Can you library out of, that's a no, or out of here on Metro Park?
Yes, I know that he.
So he, he, he chose not to do it. There's no pull the rug out, just to clear the air on what's going on on the record. He chose not to do that project. That was fully approved. And he made a business decision to instead of compete with Skip's, Skip was looking to get out of the canoe business. So he and his partner bought that business and they operate that out of Bunts and Mills today. That's why that didn't go forward. There was no community pulled the rug out or gave him part time. That was a total choice that the property owner made, just to clear the air, in case, crazy like this, it's such.
Okay, to not put like a beer barato or none of that, all that.
The idea, the idea then changed. The idea then changed.
He went then, went for that.
Hold on, hold on, I'll, 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 let me address, thank you.
Sorry.
The idea then changed to a restaurant brewery slash bike rental site that he evaluated as the second option. And the community, we understand, or I understand, the community was behind that. There's a lot of support for that. But ultimately, after going through the preliminary, uh, site plan process for that, uh, they decided that process, that project was too expensive and too risky to take on.
They decided.
They decided. So there's not been any resistance from the si- village slash city council on the redevelopment of that property. I just want that to be clear for everybody who's listening here tonight. Okay, your conception of what's going on is not correct.
Okay, thank you. I, I apologize for, I'm sorry, I didn't.
And, and Nate, Nate, I, I know Nate eight years also. I, I get along in conservative terms, you know?
Well, anyways, his original idea was great because it would have brought, um, you know, employment for, for the young people in the area and, uh, and it would benefit the community. The community could use it, you know, uh, here you've got, you've got these two buildings, um, we just get to look at it. And have to deal with the visual. But that's not the only thing. Apparently, correctly if I'm wrong, um, somebody, some developer ducks only six feet down and they hit water. Is that correct? At least that, I thought I understood that at one of the planning commission, uh, meeting, just six feet down that they hit water. Well, to me, that's, that's pretty scary because, you know, they're gonna put a garage down into the, uh, ground there for the condo development. Um, that sounds like, uh, I don't know, I'm not an engineer, obviously, but I can't help but think about sinkhole down the road. Just my thoughts. Um, but anyways, um, Dexter is now a city, as we all know, but we would like to rename the city with a small-town feel. And those, having those two buildings there, there's other land. This developer could buy some other land if they wanna just move them somewhere else away from the downtown area. We need to, uh, keep the downtown area moving with families, families, friends, and other people coming from other communities wanting to come here. So I just suggest, uh, note to the condos, in my opinion, and many other people's opinion. And if we do anything, it's just put something sort of like Nate's original plan was. Thank you.
Thank you for your time, Jen.
My name's Debbie Sammons. I'm at four three over two Corneal Lane. Um, that's just outside of town in Whitmore, considered Whitmore, but I went to Dexter on my life. That's where I grew up. You, you mentioned that, um, the, the bar, the brewery didn't go because they decided not to. But is it because that they weren't included in the parking? And therefore they had to pay exorbitant amounts in parking in order to have their place there? I mean, what, did you price them out of their idea is what I'm getting at. Um, because I don't understand how they don't, that little tiny patch of ground does not fit into the downtown. That didn't make any sense to me when I read that. Um, I don't know, I don't understand this. All I know is I was trying to figure out how we ended up with condos all of a sudden. Like you said, I've lived here all my life. And I look around, the folks here that I'm talking to, I recognize one face that I went to school with. Your wife, and I know that there's another that sits here on the board that is born and raised here. And I wonder to myself, you've all come here because of the small-town feel. You just love it. You love the charm of it. And yet you come here and you wanna make it Plymouth and Canton and Northville and everywhere else that you left behind.
Right.
Okay, so this is what I struggle with. You know, we, we've had to, we've changed a lot and it's not really good. I'm not against progress, but I, what I'm against is that we all fell in love with this small village, okay? Because I will always see it as a village. This is not a city. In fact, we had to come up with a green band so we wouldn't, we could keep ourselves separate from Ann Arbor. Okay, so that we could all enjoy the natural beauty that is around our village. Thank you.
Thank you. The members of the audience. We'll come back if you do. Um, Beth, I'm gonna need your help to turn the screens. I can't directly see. How many hands do we have up?
I have one hand aligned with Nate, I hope, with the stand.
Okay. And he's unmuted, right?
Yeah, and he just muted.
Okay, Nate, I'm ready to speak, so.
Can you turn the screen over there?
Sure.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Hi, Nate, how are you?
Good, thanks for having me. Uh, so, so yeah, so seven years of, of doing this. It's been a, a long road. Um, I didn't plan on speaking tonight, so I'll try to patch together. I didn't plan on speaking tonight, so I'll try to patch together uh, some some thoughtful insight to this this thing. Uh, first and foremost, I I support the poem not just because it's on the property that I own. Uh, it's because I think it is the best fit for that property and while I. Absolutely feel horrible that some people don't support it in the community. Uh, I've tried hard for seven years to to make something, to do something cool for the community, for the citizens there. It's. It's never really been about me. Uh, it's always been a passion project, so. I I support the poem because I I know the property. We've we've studied it for seven years, literally for with every. Government agency, Eagle, DNR, Railroad, Washington County Road Commission. City of Dexter, SIO Township, we annexed the property into the city. I mean, there there's so much information that I could sit and speak to this. For an hour plus and I don't know that everyone is fully informed of some of the facts that go along with that property. While I, while I understand the landscape is changing, if you remember what was there, it was a very dilapidated Mill Creek Sports Center. And I know that holds a uh, a sacred memory for many who grew up in Dexter. But it was also a contaminated piece of property that sewer was draining into Mill Creek. I mean, we literally removed a pipe from the bathroom that was draining into Mill Creek. I mean. The city of Dexter residents were looking at that. And if you don't think this condo development that this team has spent eight, nine months developing. Is an improvement, I I just, I I guess I disagree. I I think what they've done is beautiful. I think it sits against an elevated railroad tracks that is not beautiful. It sits next to residential subdivision of West Ridge, which is is residential. I mean, it it's. It's not an island of residential property in the middle of the city. It literally sits next to residential property. If we re re rewind pre-West Ridge subdivision and some of the residents have spoken against this project tonight. Are from that subdivision. And I know there was a a huge uproar when when this came in by some of the residents. If you rewind, the village of Dexter residents did not want West Ridge subdivision. They did not want you. Where would Dexter be without West Ridge subdivision now? It would not be the same place. So I I feel, you know, and I understand everyone's entitled to their opinion and like I said, I'm I'm sorry if everyone doesn't agree with the development. It is a change. It is different. Are you going to see something different when you look across from the city park? Yes, you will. Let's remember all of the amazing metro parks that are in Washington County, including Hudson Mills Metro Park. Which sits north, connected by the border to border trail, which is one thousand five hundred and fifty acres of undeveloped land. For all of our kids to enjoy. At the end of the day, this is city property. It's in the city limits. To to include it in the city park to me, I I mean. For what? One point five seven acres? Are you gonna put a parking lot there is is looking at a bunch of cars across the the lot look better? I would argue no. Um. I do think that the city council and planning commission. Uh, follows their ordinances to a T and and I've I've had some. Some disagreements with that, right? They don't, they don't bend. That's actually the the issue I ran into over seven years. Is absolutely this follows a master plan. We've checked all the boxes. We've worked so hard. This team has worked so hard. And it does fit all of the boxes. It it checks. I mean, there are a couple little things they're asking for, but this is the best thing that has come. Before a planning commission, which is why it it passed unanimously for the first time in seven years. Um. This makes sense. I mean, I I. I feel bad for some that are ill-informed, but uh, I truly, I wish everyone had the facts. Um, months ago, when this rally cry against anti-pelham. Started because the the rally cry was based on on non-factual information. And this is an awesome team from Washington County. Uh, they're local. They've been over backwards to make this residential condo fit in Dexter's ordinance. Um. The city, the the businesses downtown want this. If you chat with a lot of the business owners, they support it. I I went business to business. Um, if that tells you how much I care about the city of Dexter, even though I'm not there. I I asked the the business owners in Dexter, do you? Would you benefit from more foot traffic? Would you benefit from more housing? Unequivocally, yes. I I mean, they all said yes. They all supported it. So. When when you see some of these businesses in Dexter that have left. And I've seen some in seven years, uh, ten years really, that have been in the Dexter community. I've seen some come and go because they didn't make it because of lack of foot traffic. Are there problems, are there challenges in the city of Dexter with parking? There are. It's a small town and guess what? It's very popular. People love it and. Does this uh, condo development change the landscape in Dexter? Does it make it Plymouth and Canton? I I disagree. I I don't think it does. I don't think it will change the character and the people are what make Dexter Dexter. And uh, the downtown. Businesses are are limited in space, right? We're not putting up um, ten-story buildings. This this follows the ordinances. Um, I think I said everything I wanted to say. I could have forgotten something. I uh. I just hope that the city council gives this. This uh, plan, the pelham uh, a legitimate uh, glance and. Quite honestly, I I could have filled a support of six hundred people in the community that that love this plan and think it's beautiful and great. Um, so I, maybe I should have done that. Maybe maybe the Pelham group should have gone door to door. Uh, that's all I have to say. Thank you much.
Thanks for attending Nate.
Josh, any other hands online? One more sweep while they're in here. I see a hand in the back. Please, welcome.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Obelo. I live at eight five eight nine Oak Ridge Trail. That's technically Webster, but Dexter is our community. My kids both attended school here. And I loved it when they were here. Fortunately, I'm seeing a lot of changes, which is. Causing my husband and I to consider leaving the area and has been for a while. Uh, I feel like Nate answered a lot of people's questions here. He does not live here. So, of course. He's not gonna have the same passion or opinion that many of us do that consider the town of Dexter. Still a village, even though it's a city. Um. You know, he's he's made several comments about all the people that want this. Maybe we do need to have a public forum or a public opinion to see who wants it versus who doesn't want it. Because I think it's very clear from from the very small number of people here. Opposed to the number of people who are against it, um, that don't want it. So, um. I don't know, it's it's very sad to me because he he owns the property still. Is that correct? He still owns the property. He's trying to sell the property. He's he's had the property for several years. Um, it 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 screams trying to get out of the land or something that was a bad investment for him. But that doesn't mean the rest of us have to suffer because of his mistake. Um, there's still probably many of things that could be put on the table here except for condominium. As many people already stated, we have condominiums. We have them on the Baker Road. We have them, you know, on um. Behind across from the cemetery. What do we need here? We need some things like Chelsea has, as somebody else pointed out. We suffer in the restaurant department. We suffer in a lot of other areas that Chelsea thrives. So we need to take a look at other communities that are around us that are doing it right. And look to them for some um, maybe advice or uh. Just 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 a better way to um, utilize this property.
Thank you everyone for coming, participating and uh, during the thought of this today. Very good comments. Josh, nobody else on the line, right? I'm not seeing anyone else. Okay, we will move on from not arranged participation. Uh, at eight twenty to item F on the agenda, which is declarations of conflicts of interest. Are there any decisions? The agenda will move on to approval of the agenda. The report will let them move the agenda. We approve the agenda. Well, cool by South Carol, thank you Joe. Zach, does the agenda include the annexations and discussion or consideration item?
It's a, it's a consideration discussion item, so it could be either.
Okay, so it's it is and it isn't. Okay, uh, I do have a question about K four. On there, we can either do it now or we'll pull it off down here. But if someone can cover under the uh, city manager. That portion of the agenda or it depends how was your. I don't mind pulling if you wanna do it back. Whichever, the body is complete with. Okay, we'll we'll pull it in your house. So case four, we don't have time. Okay.
Sorry, uh, I just wanted to say that I have a very short verbal update from the Parks and Recreation Commission, so.
A thousand, thank you for letting me know. Yeah, lots of comments are you done?
Albert, yeah, Chris La, Griffin, yeah, Sunny Fair.
Yes.
All that, yeah, Michelle's.
Yes.
You.
Yes. Motion carriers, thank you. Uh, we have no public hearings this evening. We're down to our communications that are in the package, which is our upcoming meeting calendar. Um. Does anybody have any comments on the meeting calendar? We do have a decision later to clarify whether we're having our second meeting in December on the twenty-sixth. Or twenty-seventh, I believe, right?
Yeah, under under my report.
Any comments on the meeting calendar? Okay, same now, we'll move into our reports then this evening. Our first report is from our Public Services Superintendent. Hello Tim, how are you?
Good, that was a great.
Good.
Good, good, hell, we have a whole week. So we got two weeks in more need reported. If there's any questions, if you're available, we'll let you know.
I just found several streetlights are out on the last weekend. I think you found the last weekend when you were there. And I including at the intersection there and maybe eventually, so I don't know if I can send you a radar.
Yeah, actually we got a a call, one call back and then it's over.
Yeah, okay.
Zach, well, we've got snow, so I'm gonna ask, do we have a plan to clean the cross rocks in the roundabouts?
Yeah, we clean one in school. Actually, most of them by its own. We had done it once when they don't get around to doing that.
All right, do do we know how long? Until it's, it'll be clean a day, we.
It'll be within twenty-four hours.
Thank you.
Yeah, they had to get it tuned up on it. So everything's good to go. So we've been going real good. I really. I actually went down there last week and and commended them because how well they it's been going, the season's been. I think it's gone really well this season. In fact, they've talked, heard about it and he thinks it's going better than it's best, so. Uh, it's been a good season for it. Um. They, you know, yesterday had a little bit because we're a hundred percent ready to do a little bit of snow, but it's it's operating now. We're good to go on that. So they came in this morning to build their work around down, get it working on, so. We're good for that. There isn't any more questions. Did uh, put a stop to the potting for the year, which is the DSMI, which is per that grant. Um, one, because the weather's gonna keep getting colder. Uh, two, it's. The company is now going into a season where they have a lot of emergencies, which takes a third time, so it's not readily available. So uh, we talked about that this afternoon. Um. Talked about the leaves, uh, the pump did get installed, uh, the church roof pump today. We gotta go back to it tomorrow to make sure everything's running good, running, running that out. Uh, this week we have two more D W W secondary news. Uh, and that'll be up uh, Thursday and Friday. We should be able, we have new employee within the next week or so.
Very good, right? Thank you, Jack. Um. It's done online. Next up is our community development.
Hello Council, how are you this evening?
Michelle, we're good.
Excellent. Um, I have no updates for you. Um, sorry, I'm not there. I think Justin. Has explained that um, uh, I'm being treated for COVID. Uh, hopefully I'll be back soon, um. But um, uh, no updates at this point, but if you've got any questions about any of the meetings or anything on the um. On my report, even though it's previously um, been provided, please let me know and I'll do my best to answer them.
Okay, you'll all soon, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you for attending this evening. Um, under J three, uh, board commission reports, Jamie or Robert from the Parks Commission.
Oh, I just wanted to say that uh. I think we've run this, that the item on our agenda was to. Look for external funding opportunities for the Milk Creek Park playground project. And I think those of us in attendance were feeling general sense of frustration that. The basketball budget cycles, we've asked how many people decide on that project and every time we get to decide, understanding that's hard. Competing. Projects and ways to to spend the money, um. But I think the vision of the Parks and Recreation Commission was to do something. More than what we can maybe just. Come up with in any given budget year and we're hoping to sort of save numbers with that, so. I just told them at that meeting that I would share that frustration.
Okay, specifically the Milk Creek Park.
Right, that that project.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you for bringing that forward. Any other? Comments on the board commissions? We do have a sheriff report, sheriff report of the weekend. Anybody have any comments or questions on the sheriff report? I did take a little bit of time to look at the dashboard online. I don't think it was a chance to. Look at that, they was advertised on a decade ago, two decades ago, whatever it was. Um. The data there is organized by zip code. As opposed, it's it's. You can break it down a little bit by community, but it's. Not completely up to that, it's to our monthly report that we get, so it takes a little looking and. I provided some suggestions to them on. Defining some terminology, like the difference between a violation and a citation or incident and a traffic stop. But the, there is some good data that shows the. The type of things that are they're writing citations for or have decided to write any citations for. I'll encourage everybody to look at that, um, if they have a chance. It's a good update for their, their website. Are there any documents in your reports? On the city manager report, Dustin?
Sure, so I have one verbal update for you, um, but the one that's probably related is um. Uh, I believe we posted our uh, second city council meeting in December for December twenty-sixth. Which is uh, the Tuesday after Christmas. And um, the job is gonna be closed that day. Um. But I wanted to see, you know, what council's availability is on that Tuesdays, they'll work or whether Wednesday uh, more appropriate. Um, I don't know, we'll have at least one council member absent, so. Before we get into a situation where we don't have a forum, I wanted to make sure that.
I can make you there.
I can either, I find up the twenty-five. I'm fine with either, but similar to James.
I can't guarantee I'm going on the twenty-seventh and I would. Note that if we move it to the twenty-seventh, it's then considered a special meeting for four-year purposes and it needs all the special meeting facilities requirements.
I'm I'm asking how. I get you, it's okay.
Really? All right, not that I care. That's obviously, I'm just.
Well, we know Dan's gonna be out of town.
I mean, I I I'm personally, I was coming in and.
Okay.
Okay, okay. Uh, does does anybody have any questions for me on that report?
Okay, sorry. I believe earlier I checked that.
Actually, sorry, I believe earlier I checked that the the meeting is. On ours, on the website is Wednesday twenty seventh.
It is also the.
Want to verify that, have a look at this picture, we're working for that, we should be best.
Do you don't think the calendar isn't necessarily the final authority?
You tell us what it's supposed to, it sounds like you have a jury, you can make it.
I don't, sir, I have other questions.
Okay, I just have one thing to add to my report, follow Justin's. I attended the, uh, last meeting on November fifteenth, the Washington area transportation study. And, um, the policy committee meeting, um, having to make a lot of adjustments going, but if they want to make this one. Uh, they did vote to, um, create a new census urban boundary that is just Dexter. Um, previously, Chelsea and Myla had their own urban boundary and, um. The policy committee voted to include Dexter, it's all urban boundary, which means. Um, instead of getting. Uh, in dollars, from dollars the road, every third or fourth year, we will get them finally every two years. So I thought that was a good thing, happy to be there with that. Uh, thank you, policy committee for their. Then say that separates us from, you know, the whole commission, so it's essentially the city boundary. Uh, plus, um, the area of Dexter, quickly road, the horse you've been. And the areas along that lake road, if they. All Dexter urban boundary, so. Does anybody have any questions for me? I've been out a while during the holiday, so, um, to be back. Okay, we'll move on to consent agenda, items K one through three. And I asked, um, wait, before we get to that, I asked Justin what the address of the water service line replacement for M and K. They were rooting, I was not asking you on the record so we know what we've really spent the dollars.
Yeah, and that is unfortunate, uh, seventy one to plus.
Seventy one, two, four, okay? You did tell anyone to make that, so officially there, please.
All right, I move we approve the three items on the consent agenda, bills and payroll in the amount of one hundred and seventy three thousand, twenty four dollars and forty cents. In connection of the debt today's committee wrote closure request for the holiday life grade on December second, twenty twenty three. And water service line replacement at seventy eight, twelve, towards freed by M and K, twelve, rising in Jettinburg, an amount not to exceed. Six thousand five hundred and eighty seven dollars and fifty cents.
Is there a second to the consent agenda? Yeah, thank you. Sergeant, please call vote on three consent agenda items when you're ready.
Michelle's.
Yes.
Griffin, yeah, Schla.
Yeah.
Alda, yes, Hubbard, yes, Sammy Faro.
Yes.
You.
Yes. Motion carries on those three items, thank you, we're down, we have no unfinished business, so we're down to new business. Uh, item M one, which is consideration of excusing, uh, council person that us applicants and planned applications from council may as well. Uh, from summer eleven through January eight, yeah, maybe out for three or more, and the charter, um. Requires to provide, uh, since it's provided, let's just provide. We have only like maybe one.
I I will move you through both conceding dams. There's a lot that's a completely helpful meetings from December about it, moving in the rate twenty twenty four.
Thank you for following me in that motion, it's been said. Definitely, I'll there, thank you, it's the night. Any other second?
That was quite, this would be better on the third meeting and when with the absences, because if we're planned, they may not be planned, we need to plan a plan. And just want to make sure you're not gonna be sitting home smoking a jay playing role of warcraft, if something like that. That's a that's that's a joke, but there, you know, if someone has something that takes them away versus not being here. Um. There's a little bit of a difference, yes.
Oh, we're trying to plan ahead, so, what?
Yeah, in fact, I know that's a joke, but I think it's kind of rude since there are times when people at this table want to be considered private citizens and Dan has afforded that same. Luxury as well, and we've had people who haven't shown up for meetings in a row for various reasons. And this, I think, is forward planning and I I just think it's it's. It's a courtesy to us and it's inappropriate for us to speculate what he's gonna be doing during that time.
Well, the comments by council.
Does the charter of finance, instead of capacity, now that you would have. Okay.
But thank you for asking, good bye.
I was gonna give you a head though.
Fair enough, sir. Jordan, please call the vote in another second.
Michelle's.
Yes.
Griffin, yeah, Alda, yeah, Schla.
Thanks.
Hubbard, yes, Sammy Faro.
Yes.
You.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you, uh, new business item M two, consideration of the fellow condominiums preliminary planned unit development. Is there a?
Even. We skipped K four, which was.
Uh, that goes to M five.
Oh, we moved M five.
We moved it to the end of the agenda, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry about that.
We can move it up, we got skipped, we can move it up. We could move it up, this is one person that wants to do that.
I I would, uh. Maybe each other, see move M five to M one.
Okay, I'm doing, yeah.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
I'm doing, okay. Okay, is there support?
Support.
Support by S and R. In discussion on moving. For M K four up. Please call the vote to move that up.
Griffin, yeah, Hubbard, yes, Alda, yeah, Michelle's.
Yes.
Schla.
Yeah.
Sunny Faro.
Yeah.
You.
Yeah. Okay, so that now follows proceeds of item M two. Um. That you had a question, did the item, first of all, is there a question, the item of the consideration of an amendment? To approve the final site, to truly approve final site and champion actor to allow for the installation of a fence instead of some juniper trees.
I will be approved, the local water. Whatever they get for us.
That we approve, actually, I just hope that we approve the amendment for the final site plan for champion gymnastics to allow for the installation of the fence.
Okay, great. Second by Griffin, Jamie? Okay, question, does that you had asked us to be?
Yeah, so I don't believe we can approve an eight foot fence, and I raised that question because section three point oh nine says a maximum fence height is six feet. Then it goes on to say a maximum height of eight feet may be allowed on property with the principal building containing approved industrial use. The dance studio is not considered an industrial use, it's permitted in the industrial zoning district. But if you look through NACCO, if you look through all the bits and pieces of our zoning ordinance, it is not considered industrial use. But we have the highest fence that we could prove for that would be six feet.
Michelle, did you hear Zach's comment for question?
Yep, I did hear Zach's comment for question, um. And we took a broad approach, uh, to the, um, to the, uh, to the point that Zach made about it being an industrial use. Um. Technically, he's right, it's not an industrial use, but it is in the industrial district. Um, and it's only in the industrial district where industrial uses are. Whether it's the research and business park or the I one district where eight foot fences would be permitted. If council would prefer to follow strict, um, interpretation, then Zach is right, a six foot fence would be the, uh, the way you would amend the motion.
Uh, Michelle, what's the height of the fence that's used in the picture example next to it?
I believe that's an eight foot fence, Sean, but, um, I don't know that for certainty.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
What? Go ahead, Michelle.
Uh, the reason I was going to say that is the use next door was considered an industrial use.
Okay. Okay, what?
Uh, I just would like to say is. Somebody who sat on planning commission and heard from this, uh, business owner about the reasoning behind why they want to make the fence. I would be inclined to. Go with the broader interpretation of the industrial park at large and say eight feet is fine. This business owner did a lot of work to contact all the neighbors who live in Jacobson, and the primary reason for this fence. Is to provide light blocking for the people that live behind this property. Because we know it's dark now, it was dark when we all got here, and this is a business that operates. Pickup during a time that would be putting headlights into those private, those residences. And so I think that I'd like to honor all the work that the business owner put into this, and do what's right, um, by the people who live J site.
The council comments or questions?
Zach, I could support a six foot fence, I can't support an eight because in applying ordinances. You go with the plain meaning of the text, use is different from district or zone or park. Um, I know it's a stickler, but that's, I work in planning, that's how laws are interpreted. That's all.
Okay. But how's Jamie?
Uh. Yeah, do we put ourselves in a sticky situation if we agree with that? Really?
I I would have heard, uh. I don't know that it's a sticky situation, I mean, if they think that eight feet is more appropriate than industrial park, we could probably change the way of worded. If that was the, if that was the sticker.
I mean, I guess you can get into a situation where like the use of that building changes back to something industrial and then somebody else has been tear down the six foot fence. You know what I mean, like?
Correct. Well, same. I think the. Broader interpretation here is probably science given, simple death, well, we're trying to accomplish by.
And is there any procedure where this becomes a Z B A thing? That I don't know.
I think so.
Why?
My question, because I understand what Zach's saying, especially in light of other things that we're gonna review later and try to, you know, adhere to. Our zoning ordinance is to a T. I hear what both of you are saying, and I'm wondering if there's a way for efficiency sake to approve this as is now. And then at our next meeting or something, look at the text, like a text amendment to the zoning ordinance, yeah. To to just take out the use issue because.
It might take a couple of years.
Right, but being right, it's switched back to an industrial use. I mean, it it is where it is.
If it's switched to industrial use, you should comply at that point, right?
Yes.
Right, so that will feature?
Yeah, yeah. That's correct.
What if they have six? Right, that's her. But I think what she's trying to say is that they have a six foot fence there because we're saying that they only have a six foot fence and they want an eight foot fence. They're gonna have to tear it out and start over when we could just broaden the language and make it eight feet now. Benefit everyone and move on.
You have a couple of comments? Okay, I believe we have a motion by. Hold on, second by Griffin.
Sunny Faro.
This is a motion to amend the group final segment of the international to allow for the installation of a fence.
Yes, thank you.
Michelle's.
No.
Alda, yes, Griffin, yes, Hubbard, yes, Schla.
Yeah.
You.
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, good luck with your business.
Thank you.
And thanks for looking out for the husband's expectations, Dan.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, um, all right, so we just covered. It for, um, let me move back up, now we're on to M two. Um. Consideration of the general condominiums preliminary planned unit development. Is there a motion by a council member? Or we won't be able to talk all the way to make, just kind of it is better. It's the girl. I'm gonna need to read all this. Um, so maybe right at one thirty eight, okay? Um, thank you. Based on information provided by half in staff, C W A, O H N, we have been informed with the standards in section nineteen ninety five. City council accepts the planning commission's final to recommendation to approve. The dog condominium application seems to rise in twenty twenty three. The limited few of these land revised revision dated September twenty ninth, from twenty three and revise building elevation cross sections received. Over second twenty four, subject to the conditions listed on page thirty eight, one thirty. One through eleven. Okay, thank you, is there a second?
Ten seconds.
Thank you. Okay, do you believe that we have, or Michelle, I guess, probably place to start, Justin? And then we do have representative for the applicant, I think in the audience, which is both there at some point as well. Michelle?
Hi, Sean. Um, if we can have, the applicant does wish to make a presentation to you, um, similar to the one that they made to planning commission. Um, so if it's okay, could they do, and then I will follow up.
Yep, right in my name, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a representative?
Yeah.
Welcome. Hello. The state of name and. Add us officially, do it, please.
Yeah, sure, my name is Joshua Bloom, uh, I live at seven zero seven Gardenia in Arlo, Michigan. Uh, good evening, I appreciate all your time and consideration. Um, can we, whoever's controlling the, uh, screen, can we have you pull up? Um. I'm gonna look at the presentation, I'll pull up this second. Okay, perfect. Thank you, appreciate it. So adding song thirty five, exactly, that helped you join.
I think the check plan starts on one fifty four, maybe, not afterward, that must have started.
Uh, right now, just if you can pull up the rendering, the elevation, uh, that we have shared, that would be great.
Just one, one, two.
And then just, and it's gonna be on that rendering. Thank you. Oh, Josh. All right. Appreciate it. Okay, so I'll get started, so, good evening all, like, like I said, my name is Joshua Bloom with a company called Bloom General Contracting. And I'm a part of the development team. Uh, my company, uh, started actually by my father, uh, and I grew up in Ann Arbor, we built our own, um, Washington County for forty years now. One of the projects in Dexter we did was La Fontaine Chevrolet. Um, just as an example, uh, on the, uh, Zoom call, we have, uh, my development partners, uh, Kelly Anderson. She's with a company called K L A Development, which is a custom home builder in Washington County. And Jeff Mahaney, which is an architect that does work as well on Washington County. Um, with us tonight, uh, as as members of our, uh, our team are, uh, Jerry Sisnaski, he's our landscape architect, you'll hear from him. Uh, in a little while, uh, um, to discuss, uh, Milk Creek and some of the issues and concerns that people have, uh, related to Milk Creek. Uh, as well as Joe Maynor, who's with Washington Engineering, he's our civil engineer for the project. Um, we also have Shane Burley, who's the studio Detroit Architects. Uh, as well as Josh and Kogak with Bloom, who will be the project manager, um, if we, uh, get this approved, um. So. Um. I just want to, uh, say that I really appreciate, um, the process that we've gone through. Um, we started in May and have been working on that, um, this, this project, um, prior to May. Uh, we went through your conceptual P U D, uh, process to obtain preliminary feedback, um, from your planning commission and your consultants, your fire department. O H M, et cetera, and we continue to work on the project. The first rend- rendition of this project looked much different, it was a taller building, it was fifty seven feet tall. Uh, had a completely different architectural elements to it. And actually, there were three buildings on the site. Um. There, there, we've been working on this for eight months and we've been listening to both positive and negative comments from the community, concerns, concerns. There, there, we've been working on this for eight months and we've been listening to both positive and negative comments from the community, concerns, et cetera. Um, and what you see today, um, really reflects the process that's taken place, that planning has rigorously put us through. Um, I, I think that they did a, a great job in pushing, uh, the development team to come up with and get to where we're at. And it's actually made for a much stronger development. Um, I think that the, the buildings, the architecture and, you know, this, this, this whole, um, proposal actually is quite beautiful and will be great for the city of Dexter. Um, so, you know, one of the things that we did, for example, and I know you have the report, hopefully you've read it. Um, but, you know, as we drop the building height, um, down, uh, ten feet, so now the building height is forty seven feet. Um, so we're only asking for a variance now of two feet. Um, just as one example of, of elements that were critically discussed, um, with planning and, and revised. We, we then initially went through a, um, preliminary PUD, um, meeting, I believe in August. And, um, it was postponed. So we had to continue to work on this project and, uh, work with your, uh, city consultants, um, to get to where we were at. And at the last planning, uh, meeting, it was unanimously, unanimously approved by planning. Um, everyone reviewed it, uh, including some folks here, uh, as well as Carlisle Wardman, uh, OHM, uh, your fire department. Um, the, the experts and consultants here have all felt that this does meet your requirements for PUD approval. Um, which is great. We've, we've been working hard. Actually, at the end of that, that meeting, a lot of the planning commission members actually thanked us, including the chair, directly for addressing all of their concerns directly. Um, so that is what you're looking at tonight. Um, it's been an eight month process of, of response, of listening, and trying to put forth, uh, the, the best project that we can, um, for the city of Dexter and for, for you all. And we are committed, the development team is committed to continue to work, uh, with all consultants. We, we have, if approved, we have still, there will be many eyes on this project. Eagle will be involved, the road commission, uh, there will be a, a, you know, a long approval process with OHM engineers. Um, there will be a long process here, uh, and we're committed to continuing to, um, respond and work with all experts, uh, in their fields. Um, I just want to go through some of the issues that are brought up, um, many of the issues that, uh, citizens of Dexter have brought up today, we've, we've heard, we've, we've heard for six months now and we've been trying to address. Um, you know, ultimately, we're not gonna, um, satisfy everybody. No project is ever, um, any development, uh, is ever gonna satisfy everybody. But, um, there are a lot of, uh, comments that are brought up that, that we have addressed. Um, and, and hopefully you've seen that in the report, but just as an example, you know, traffic impact. I understand that there's a traffic issue in that area. Um, and I understand that there's a potential roundabout that, that is being proposed, um, to be worked on. Um, Carlisle Wardman, in their report, said that our condo project will actually produce the least amount of car trips per day compared to other, uh, possible developments that would go here. That's what, that's what the Carlisle Wardman report says. So, you know, and, and I think it said approximately eighty two car trips per day generated. So our project is not going to tip the scale to some degree in this, in this area or with this roundabout, um, to be the main cause of, of a, of a traffic or congestion issue. Further, as we move along, we'll continue to work with OHM and the roundabout, uh, as it develops, uh, very closely. Um, so I just wanted to point that out. I also wanted to point out that though there are folks that, um, uh, are against, uh, this development, there are many letters that we received, uh, in support of this project and I, I believe that they're in your report and share with you. But I would like to read a couple of those, uh, and pretty much every single business that we reach out to in the downtown area wrote us a letter of support. And it's pretty obvious why. Small communities need foot traffic and they need, they need local residents to support them. So I just want to read a couple of letters from those people since so many people spoke out against the project. I think it's only fair. So Brian Mannitz with Doors and drawers is a longtime Dexter resident. Our family owns and operates a manufacturing facility in the Dexter Business Park. Over the length of our company's history, we have witnessed firsthand the growth of the Dexter community. I believe Pelham project will be a positive development for the area and landscape. The care and thoughtfulness that went into designing this building is well displayed throughout the renderings. Laura Keever with Rebergen, eight zero six zero Main Street. As a resident and business owner in Dexter, I personally like the idea of more housing, especially condos, as there is little land available to build additional homes. We have invested in our schools and amenities and engaged in measured responsible growth, so it is no surprise that people wish to live in Dexter. Excuse me, I, I listen to everybody. It's only fair to not give me the outright set for any comment. Thank you. So, we have invested in our schools and amenities and engaged in measured responsible growth, so it's no surprise that people wish to live in Dexter. This development would increase downtown foot traffic, which is essential to attract retailers and restaurants, which are in turn critical to a vibrant downtown. The Pelham site has so many challenges for development and there have been so many iterations. I am concerned it will sit vacant if this proposal fails. It is impossible to please everyone, so I'm hoping that greater good and balance will be determined. Pelham really seems like a win if it's done well. And one last one. This is from Death and Brian Shorter with, uh, owners of Erratic Ale. We would like to voice our support for added housing at eight one eight zero Main Street. The design concept of the Pelham ties into the history of the area, preserves the waterfront banking and its trees and it's environmentally conscious. The development will provide more housing downtown to serve the growing demand and will align with the city of Dexter's master plan for a walkable downtown. We love to see our community thriving and key elements of that are a balance of healthy commercial businesses along with thoughtfully incorporated housing to support the downtown community. So what we've found, the development team, uh, has recently worked on a project in Ann Arbor called the Garnet Condos. And what we found, uh, from the demand, um, for that project is most folks moving in there are, are empty nesters and folks that are retirees. So we actually got several calls already on Pelham from local Dexter residents simply looking to downsize. And the reality here is that I think the Pelham is going to be an answer for people that currently live in Dexter and want to remain in Dexter, but want a low, a lower maintenance situation than their home. That's what I think the reality is here. Um, someone brought up in the planning commission meeting, um, access, uh, for handicap individuals. The Pelham will be just that. There'll be elevator access, uh, to each floor and there, the, uh, each unit is, uh, there's no stairs. It's all flat. So this is a, this is an awesome, uh, uh, living experience, you know, for the city of Dexter, for residents. Um, and I'm going to bring up a couple, uh, of our consultants as well. I'm gonna first bring up Shane, um, to speak a little further about the architecture and the process that went into place as well as the building heights. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Uh, Shane Burley, Studio Detroit Architects, twenty forty, Hardy Avenue, Suite two hundred, Detroit. I'm here to talk a little bit about the architecture of this project and we've been working on this for a long time. And I know everyone, you know, architecture is, is subjective, right? Either you like it, you don't like it, you like certain parts of it. But I would say that there is a lot of design, you know, mentalities and, um, a rigorous design process that is put into what these buildings look like. Everything from massing, you know, four stories. We do have that first, you know, floor buried in the ground, underground apartment. The way that this, these two buildings are broken up from scale and size, all the way down to materiality. We have brick, we have stone, we have, uh, fiber cement panels with, you know, intricate trims put on it at various places. It's not like just a cookie cutter box. You know, the way that these facade step back, the way that we have overhangs as well as the deck areas, you know, there's thought and care put into that. The way you have your cornice at the top, take a look at like the Jefferds and the District Library, very roundness of that as well. So I just like to say, yes, architecture is subjective. However, I feel like this fits Dexter. I really do. You know, from the color of the brick to the color of the buildings and solid, and again, that amassing the scale. This fits Dexter. I love how the green space, and I know we'll bring up, um, Eric a little bit here, top of landscape. But that contrast between the green and the red, you know, how you have that dark color that almost recedes makes that building feel lower. Not so high and lofty. I know everyone's concerned about the height. I'd just like to point out, you know, the commercial district allows up to five stores, the train next door. We're asking for four. We're not asking for any, uh, density increases. In fact, we got rid of an entire floor of rubble units, or not rubble, leased units, excuse me, to bring that building down. You know, we're listening. You know, we're trying to balance the needs of, you know, township as well as needs of market. I think what we came up with, and actually, no, I, I know what we came up with, is a really nice product. Good quality materials. Extra time spent in the design process, not just a straight cookie cutter box. You know, there's some detail here. We're at forty seven feet. You know, I'd like to point out that the train bridge, uh, if the Pelham's at eight ninety eight, the train bridge is eight sixty three. So it was thirty five feet above the train bridge. How about those surrounding tree tops over there? Nine hundred thirty eight feet above sea level, that's total height, but. Above sea level, that's, those are tall existing trees. Part of our building is blocked by the trees. Part of it is blocked by the bridge. We're all still sunken down in the creek bed. You know, that's kind of the beauty that we can do this four story building and have it depress in the, in the earth and the poverty. You know, and it's still, it's, it's not a behemoth, but a monster, I think. Well, you know, I guess compare that to the Jefferds, you know, nine oh eight, District Library and aisle two. As you can see, we're breaking that level there. Matching adjacent buildings, matching existing context, matching historic structures or replicas of them. So I, I really, that's all I had to say about architecture, um, if you want. Thank you, Shane. Thank you.
Shane, are the, the, the two buildings are there? Fourteen, fourteen?
I got it, that's fine. Thank you. Thank you, Shane.
So, um, again, I'm, I'm sure you reviewed this, this, uh, the reports that were provided, but, um, one of the main community benefits that we're providing, that one of the challenges we have in this site is, is, uh, there's no water right now to the site. Um, so we would be bringing an eight inch water main from, uh, Alpine Street, um, eleven hundred linear feet to East Ridge, um, which is way farther than, you know, this site and looping the system, uh, in conjunction, working very close to the OHM on this. Um, that's eleven hundred linear feet of eight inch water main. Um, OHM, uh, and our consultants estimated the cost of that to be five hundred to six hundred thousand dollars. This is a massive in, infrastructure investment that we are going to do for the city of Dexter. Uh, it both provides reliability, uh, by looping the system and it also provides for, uh, future development down the road, um, that has no benefit to us but to other, uh, other developments down the road. Um, that's part of what we're proposing and what we're committed to doing, uh, with this project. And second is cleaning up Mill Creek and the quarter. There's a lot of misunderstanding, um, going on. And there, there's, there's great reason for concern and I appreciate it. I'm, have the same concern. It's very critical element to me with this project is protecting Mill Creek and doing this correctly. And so what, what I've done is I've got experts involved so that we can, you know, get through to how should this be done? What should Mill Creek truly look like? And so I'm gonna bring up Jerry Sosnowski now to speak to what we're proposing to do to, um, protect and even, uh, better, um, the water quality and Mill Creek.
You can switch to the slides, uh, in Greenwood, you know, seven, my name is Jerry Sosnowski. I'm a registered landscape architect that live in ninety four, ninety one oh four, well, with Lake Drive and Wentworth Lake. Been there for the last thirty three years while I worked, you know, in the United States. I've been licensed for forty years and in those forty years I've, uh, planted prairie, restored woodlands, restored shorelines throughout the Great Lakes and beyond the east coast, even down the Florida. Been founded. So what I'm here to talk about are natural systems and hopefully when I get done, there'll be some useful information that people will have. There is PowerPoint, just green, all the flags, they have green background. So what I can do. What's important are the pictures that I'm showing, but I can start talking, so we're not, we're not. So, um, an important part of shoreline, following shoreline erosion is to diagnose the river conditions, you know, understanding the river processes. Uh, assessing what's happening on the land, proper construction with erosion systems, maintenance of erosion control systems and landscape practices that are healthy to the river portal. I, um, took pictures of the river um, the last week of October. And, uh, it showed, it shows there, you know, how degraded the vegetation is. There's a lot of invasive species. Um, some are really bad in the sense that they spread and they'll be carried. Any of this unmanaged vegetation, um, it leaves the shoreline open to erosion, facilitates, um, unnecessary nutrient loading. It promotes invasive species because it's carried downstream and it destroys wildlife habitat. Um, and on this site, uh, it's completely destroyed it. Um, river corridors would, did not have, in Michigan, did not have trees adjacent to it. And we know this through, uh, in the eighteen twenties when the state was surveying, all those notes we have in our office, you can read through. And, uh, the other source of information are native tribes. Uh, basically, they were, um, grassy, wet meadows. And the best, without my pictures, the best way to think of it is if you go on the other side of Main Street and look at the park. Here we go. Okay, that, second slide, please. So here, these are these pictures that I took. One's in July, the other's in October. And one at the top is, um, black locusts and you can't even watch it. One at the bottom shows all the other species and behind it are some native trees that are elegant, that are, you know, in the eighty, ninety feet height, those would be safe. Next slide. Next slide. Um, the hydraulic condition, um, I think, you know, there's a significant flow of water through, you know, Creek throughout the season. An important thing to know about is the ordinary high water. And if you look at that bottom slide, you see that scouring and erosion. That's what Eagle is real interested in because that's not the under here floodway. That's during a large rain event, the river, creeper stream goes up to that point. And that's what determines how it moves through the land. So it's super critical to understand it. Uh, there's concern about why didn't the planning commission address some of the, uh, river issues? Well, that's because it's not there. uh, river issues? Well, that's because it's not their, um, authority to do that. If Eagle and the U S Corps of Engineers, that's their authority to do that. And they watch very closely, you know, I deal with them daily. And not much gets by them. Next slide please. The other thing I would say about Eagle, well, there's a comment about, um, stormwater and how it's being handled. This site is, um, using swirl chambers, which are basically very large manholes that have filtration. You've got a swirl chamber on the other side of Main Street in the park. There's a sign, you've got a swirl chamber. Well, that's what's being used here. It eliminates oils and floating debris, sediments, and then that excessive water from storm events is going to be stored in tanks that are low grade and it will be released into the stream at a measured amount. So the whole thing's protected. No, um, pollutants are gonna, uh, just go into the river. It's gonna go through the system and it's gonna be held there till it's, um, an appropriate volume. And so you're not gonna see excessive scouring and that kind of thing. There's and, you know, besides Eagle and Corps of Engineers, you can have County Water Resources, uh, looking at that and improving it. This slide, um, on trees, species. Uh, you know, when you look at the whole district, trees and streams and wetlands, um, Washtenaw County wasn't a uh, forested area. It was open berry, oak savannas. And records show that there were probably only between twelve and fifteen trees per quarter section of land. And there's still evidence of that if you drive around Freedom Township, New York Township. Some of these huge oak trees that have been there for hundreds of years. Um, it's back to that. You know, they weren't along rivers because that's dangerous way of protecting when you have a wet one there, a tree. You hear a lot about phosphorus loading into rivers. Well, sixty percent of that's coming from tree leaves. Every, uh, the trees that are, you know, uh, along river fronts, dropping the leaves are floating down. They're contributing all that phosphorus loading into the water. Next slide. So that picture, um, what I was trying to describe earlier, picture at the top is a natural river in Illinois with the prairie on either side of it. No trees, you notice in picture, trees are far away from the river. Second picture is your waterfront. Just, um, to the south of the site, looks pretty good. Same kind of thing, grasses, sedges, forests. So what we're intending to do is just continue that on the next slide. So we're going to reclaim the depleted site. You got invasive species, tree health and botthorn, black locusts, poison ivy, many others. Um, we're landscaping with natives, tamarack, shingle. Shingle is it's very rare, but it exists in Washtenaw and it exists along Mill Creek. And if you go up and found one this north of Marsh Road or south of Marsh Road, what they are, they're native species, but they're never green. They don't lose their leaves. It's, we're using it in our planters. I started to talk about stormwater treatment, removing the solids, oils, floating pollutants before it's released into the river. Next slide. So on left is just, uh, kind of the dihermatic stabilization of a shoreline. And picture on the right is a project that I just finished up this summer, um, showing where we're using live plugs, uh, seed, soil erosion control. You can see, you know, the lighter part is a soil erosion fabric, down on the side slope are live plugs and seeding and then the lower reaches are live plugs that are managed to soil. Next slide. So basically, these three pictures are important. You've got the top picture is what you have written off, picture in July. You've got this dank, uncontrolled invasive species. All you have to do is add water to that and you got erosion more than you can play with. So what we would do is we would take all that material down, flush with the grain. We put in like a cover crap, like uh, seed oats or annual rye or something. So we could carry a fire across that. What we want to do is using prescribed burning, control that woody vegetation and the seed bank that's in there. So where we want to get to is the bottom picture. Putting the sedges, forests and other grasses, those are deeply rooted structures. So, yeah, you know, the things that we would be planting in there uh, in a square meter of surface where they occupy, they have thirty miles of root system. You're not gonna get that out of any plant material. And you're gonna eliminate that nutrient loading that comes off the trees out into the river. So that's the approach and, uh, we're using natives on the shoreline, we're using systems, we're working within systems that we know work. Got plenty of experience. And we're trying to make the site better than we found it.
Thanks, Jerry. And thank you, Jerry. So, yeah, initially, you know, back in May, uh, when you were hearing about trying to, you know, screen this, some, some, uh, of those concerns from citizens. Yeah, I had the approach to, to, to keep all of this, you know, I didn't know. And once we got Jerry Sosnowski involved, we, you know, followed his lead for what truly is a healthy, uh, uh, riverbed system. So, um, Jerry's worked with Eagle, uh, countlessly throughout the years. He knows, uh, what to do and he is taking the lead on that. We were gonna do what Eagle and what a landscape architect recommends for the health of Mill Creek. Um, during the planning commission, uh, uh, meeting, last meeting, it was brought up, uh, about some of the, the long-term, uh, maintenance of it. And, um, I believe they provided language, um, during their motion that may be in your report. But, um, we are, uh, committed to, um, you know, the process because it's a, it's truly when you're dealing with plants and what Jerry's describing, it, it's going to take, uh, several years to, uh, really get there and weed out all these invasives, um, do this, uh, um, controlled, um, um, burning. Um, and that can be a part of, uh, you know, development agreement, but we're committed to doing that correctly. So Mill Creek, uh, you know, looks beautiful after we're, um, we're, we're done with it. Um, I also wanted to mention, um, the, the trees that we're planting on site. Maybe if you could go back, um, Josh, to the, uh, the rendering.
Eric, thank you. Michelle, can you put the, our, the slides back up?
The PowerPoint?
Yes, please.
Oh, sorry.
For two to represent the fly deck.
Hold on.
Yeah, I regret that it's a five-year name of the program.
That's correct, remember? That's correct, yeah. And, um, there'd be a, a landscape maintenance bond that was proposed by planning um, to be held on the project so that, um, the city, uh, you know, um, has oversight on, on that to make sure that, you know, what, what we're showing and what we, uh, you know, get approved is gonna happen. And we're, and we're, uh, we, we agree with that. But it, the rendering shows some of our, our, uh, onsite, um, planting and some of the, the trees that are shown, um, are, uh, the height of them at planting. And I just wanted to point out without looking at the rendering, but, um, some of the, the, the tree species that Jerry is proposing, one of them I believe is a tamarack. A tamarack pine? Is that it? Come on, I don't know trees as, as good as Jerry, but it, it's a, it's going to grow how high, Jerry?
Well, it, they'll get fifty feet, but we'd be bringing it in at thirty feet.
So we're bringing, we're bringing it at thirty feet. So the rendering doesn't really depict the height correctly of that, you know, compared to the building. But there are places around the building. So there, there, there is gonna be some trees to, you know, help soften that, that, the, the building, um, in different areas as well. Just to, just to point out, um, to, to city council. So with that, you have a lot of the other information in the report. So I don't need to, I don't wanna, um, keep beating that drum. I just wanna say that, um, we appreciate, uh, the process that's been in place here, um, working with your planning. Um, to get here, uh, has been a very solid and rigorous process and our team is committed to continuing to work with your consultants, uh, moving this forward and we're prepared to. Um, and we feel it'd be a great, uh, project for Dexter. So we hope you feel the same. I know not everybody does, but, um, I appreciate your considerations there.
Thank you, sir. We may have some questions for you as we discuss here. Okay, council questions. Or Michelle?
Hello, okay. So if you're ready for me, I can start.
You have a presentation as well?
Um, not a, a formal presentation. I'm not gonna take you through everything. You have, um, the staff review, both for your meeting, planning commission's meeting, and then the full packet that was provided with the planning commission. Um, you also have a supplement that, um, I, that Justin provided you today that takes you through the process and it's your first step in figuring out, um, whether this project qualifies as a P U D. And if so, um, how you would proceed. Um, it just provides a little more detail than what the review was in your packet. Um, if you've got any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Um, if you want me to go through this, I can go through step by step. I take my cue from you as to how you wanna go through this.
With everyone having hints to look at the supplemental information that's on the dial. Okay, then we have a question from Michelle and then her mate. So Michelle, it's your opinion and our planning consultant's opinion that this meets the criteria to comply with the, to qualify for P U D?
Yes, sir. It does.
Are there questions for applicants that are in the audience who just do that? There?
Yeah, I, I guess I'll go with some specific question. So, um, why are fifty-six sites required, uh, which is fifteen more, I believe, than what the maximum is on?
Is it current basis?
Yes.
Yeah, please come on.
And it's for reference, uh, the Jeffords building, I believe they have one space per unit.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so that, that was also brought up, um, through multiple rounds at planning and, um, ultimately in reviewing it, um, with, uh, twenty-eight units, first off, uh, the majority of those parking spaces are gonna be underground, um, in, underneath the building. Um, but, you know, we felt that with, uh, building maintenance, um, deliveries, um, and, and guest parking there, that we, we needed those, uh, additional parking spaces, um, on the exterior. Um, so, you know, in order to actually not create, uh, a, a, a traffic issue elsewhere, um, as well, you know, that we, we felt that those, uh, were appropriate for, um, the development that we're doing.
Next detailed question, why can you only put four street trees along the property? And I guess I'll, I'll give you a, a bit notice, I am the Kent Township street guy. I planted three hundred trees a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, um, I think Joe was involved with that.
So as you'll notice, um, on the front of our property, um, there is a residential five-foot hay taken, um, proposed to be taken by the Washtenaw Land Service Commission. Um, there's also three different utilities running through there. There's an electrical line, there's gas, there's a proposed water line. And there's ordinances and help us to can plant a tree to any of those utilities. Some of the utilities packed in the front, there's really no room left to plant a tree where it wouldn't eventually give a doubt due to utility maintenance. Right, and, and so as I was looking at, I see that the sidewalk is within the property, not within the right of way to my eye. That jumped out as a spot where there could potentially be trees. The sidewalk was aligned to be in the bulk right of way. Is that considered? Or why is it deemed not usable? Uh, sidewalk is within proposed future right of way. No, I'm sorry, the sidewalk only goes just past the creek where it then turns into the drop rate. Um, you can just sidewalk extending all the way across the front of the property doesn't make sense. There's no place for people to go if they wanna take their lives and their own means trying to have property. And I guess my question is if that sidewalk once turns in, if that were pushed out to the right of way, would that allow space for the trees? For additional trees? And then, I mean, that'll, that sidewalk that goes in to the property is actually recorded by the fire department. Or so they have, it's actually a fire access lane. It's actually, I'm sorry. This one here. A lot of frontage. So it turns into the property there.
Here and going out.
Yeah, that seems like it.
Michelle, did you want to talk the data?
Not at this time unless there's a specific question or are you asking if I have answered any Zach's question?
So our proposed plan on sheet four, you'll see that there is that sidewalk, protective storm line. Even had to remove a forest and put a tree there. But that's a storm line that you're putting in? It's necessary, yeah. And the water main runs through that same area. Um, why isn't it possible to put a masonry wall between the street and the parking? It would be, that would be jumpy and we'd have very conflict to the coast. This plan's been prompted for the utilities, sorry.
What sheet are you looking at there?
Well, okay, exactly, isn't it? Don't go back on what you saw. Uh, sheet five, uh, I see faithful would be five foot. Back of the property to do a pen. Uh, masonry wall. So I, I throw this question out for council, um, and for staff that if the landscape along the creek side is being described as a recognizable benefit of this project, it ought to be something that is maintained in perpetuity, not just five years because the buildings are gonna be there more than five years. If we wanna have active maintenance, will we send the staff out there to check every spring and every fall? Five years may be appropriate, but if the site plan and the zoning ordinance says you have to put a tree somewhere and the tree died, you ought to replace the tree. The site plan is a contract and if it gets away from that, in this case especially, we heard fifteen minutes, ten minutes on, on the value and the importance of that plant, I mean, they ought to be there, uh, in perpetuity. fifteen minutes, ten minutes on, on the value and the importance of that planting, they ought to be there in perpetuity.
I can address that, Zach. The ordinance requires a two-year landscape warranty. The planning commission asked for the five-year and the performance bond. Past that five years, the HOA will still be responsible for all maintenance of this property. They just didn't want the first five years to be only on, I'm sorry, the first two years to be on the developer and all of the remaining years to be on the HOA. They felt those additional three years should be on the developer to ensure that everything takes hold like it should. And that actually was proposed by the developer and the planning commission agreed with it.
That makes more sense. I would recommend the changing the language with guarantee bond. The performance guarantee, that's a term of warning used in our zoning ordinance. Guaranteed bond means it has to be cash, that it couldn't be a letter of credit, which a lot of developers prefer to use for larger sums, because it's less grain on cash for it. For staff, I will throw a couple of questions here. My apologies for not getting it out earlier, but I was refreshing myself on planning and developments, our zoning ordinance, and the Enabling Act today. We're a bit quirky in that this council has decided it wants to be the decider for site plan, the PUDs, and the special land uses and all those things. When I look to M C L one-two-five-point-three-five-zero-three, section five, which is part of the zoning enabling act that specifically talks to PUDs, in part, it says the body responsible for review and approval of planning and developments shall hold at least one public hearing. Now, planning commission did hold a public hearing, but they are not the approving authority. So I don't believe our zoning ordinance, without having this body hold a public hearing, is confined to the state act. It's a flaw in our zoning ordinance, but we have to follow what the state says, because the state's the body that gives us the authority to do zoning locally. This probably ought to be postponed till we can correct that whole public hearing. If we don't, it gives very fertile ground for those opposed to the project to object on the process procedure. Also, M C L one-two-five-point-three-five-zero-three subsection six says that the body that approves it must prepare a report afterwards. I think that means something more substantial than just a motion. I believe that at least implies that we're going to do a resolution. I know we haven't done it in the past, but again, I was refreshing myself on some of these things today in preparation for this. Now, watch this, I'm going to upset both sides on here. So I generally support the concept of the project. I don't have concerns with traffic. Ten units, ten trips a day for drawing unit is what we rule on this. This will be less than that, because it's right next to downtown, so a lot of those trips are going to select out. It's likely going to be households without children, so you're not going to drive to school four times a day to pick them up. And if they are empty nesters, they're going to be able to self-select out of the congested times. Those trips will be made when there's less demand. I'd support it in concept, but I struggle that it meets all the criteria to be considered a planned unit development. And I say that, the planning developments were very early in planning. Then we realized that there were cases where somebody wanted to do something better than what the zoning ordinance allowed, but they didn't qualify for variances to break it. And so that's where the recognizable substantial benefit comes in. And there ought to be some nexus between what's being done and the benefit. And I struggled to meet a couple of those, so extensive landscaping beyond the site plan requirements. There are some cases where there's requests to have fewer plantings than is required for the mitigation of offsite impacts. I would suspect that the fire inspector would require this to be looped, to provide sufficient pressure for the hydrant. So running water to it is something that you'd have to do anyways. And I, I struggle to find a nexus. For sustainable site design features, Washtenaw County Water Resources Commissioner is all in on insect infiltration, so they want you to do rain gardens and other things already. So I'm struggling to meet the nexus of how that is above and beyond what's naturally required. So folks here who have memory, I think I've voted favorably on one of the planning unit votes that come to hear me on my title here. So I, I support in concept what you're trying to do, but I'm struggling to meet all the criteria that I have to check off for me to be able to.
Can we, can we say something, or is this a?
Sure.
Joe, can you, can you speak to the water requirement or the site versus what we are being asked to do? That was Zach's question about a difference in, you know, he's, you know, saying that the loop system would be required regardless of development of the site.
Perhaps it would be better if I addressed that, since I've had conversations with both D P W and fire department. So looping of the system is required for suppression for your site. But in looping the system, it also provides redundancy to Westridge. That is something both the city engineer and D P W acknowledged. Excuse me. When it comes to the, the extensive landscaping, Zach. Pardon me. Even though they did ask for certain deviations from landscape requirements, they still are providing more landscaping than would have been required. So that's why we chose, we selected or felt that they were providing extensive landscaping beyond the site plan requirements. As far as stormwater, Josh and Joe, I'll have you address that. You're going to understand that better from the Washtenaw County Drain Commissioner than I will.
Sir, one thing I'd like to point out with stormwater, this type of a building, you know, majority of our parking is underground. And as you may or may not know, underground parking and all the water that comes off of that actually goes to the sanitary sewers. It does not then enter the creek. So by putting all those parkings underneath the building, we're actually making a huge improvement. Firstly, what we would have to do on the site and put a large parking lot on. The other thing is, we're able to put so much more landscaping on this property, because we are putting all that parking underneath the building, which is giving a lot more open space. Now, some of the areas, I really didn't want to pave as much as we did. But due to fire department requirements and access, we had to put some wider sidewalks in. It's longer than long sidewalks against the building, especially through the border building. And then as far as the stormwater goes, you know, we worked very close with O H M and the Drain Commission. And one of the requirements was to get the water treated quickly and appropriately, meeting the high-quality standards of the Drain Commission. By using swirl fingers, you're able to guarantee, because you've got standards that they designed by for sediment removal, soil removal, and then maintenance requirements for those when they're getting discharged to the creek. First, a traditional pond, the water would dump into a sediment basin first, and then just go flowing to the pond. It doesn't have that whole treatment to get a lot of the sediment and flow to the health as well as a creature that does. You'll notice we're actually providing two pre-treatment units on this property by splitting it. Less, reducing the amount of blow, giving it more time. We do have rain garden in the rear, which will also help with the sediment voting. So we are meeting all of the requirements. In some cases, exceeding those requirements for providing those pre-treatment units onsite.
Zach, just one other thing, you mentioned the fire code. I would highly, highly recommend looking at, because this building has ceilings, the roof is more than thirty feet, it's going to require the fire apparatus access lane. And my recollection is, I think it's appendix D, one oh five something. It requires that access lane to be at least fifteen feet from the facade of the building. I don't think it's fifteen feet from the facade throughout. So that's, that's not for us, that's for you to sort out with the, actually, we did a back end. So I guess it's probably the empty to us.
Zach?
Go ahead, Michelle.
I was just going to say what I think I heard someone say, that work their design out with fire department. And the chief is, has accepted everything that they have proposed. Or they proposed it in accordance with what he wanted. And I believe Doug is online if we have any questions for him. He's attending virtually.
So Ed Root also online?
Yeah, that's Ed Root, and Ed are both online.
Doug or Ed, do you have anything relative to the fire protection that you would like to make on the building? While on this set of plans, as proposed? We're under the assumption that you've looked at it?
That, yes, we've looked at multiple iterations and have had discussions and have requested some modifications and changes, and they've all been made satisfactorily. And the buildings will be fully suppressed, which will certainly aid in suppression efforts, should that be necessary.
Thank you for being on tonight and your plan. Scott Manzell, are you online? Hi, Scott, this is, this is John, how are you?
Good, how are you guys doing tonight?
Scott is our city attorney. Because Zach raised a question that I'm going to ask him to repeat, to help me with the exact M C L number. But he made the comment that he believes that city council through, through this process needs to hold a public hearing, and that can't be held by the planning commission. What number did you reference in the M C L, Zach, if you have one-two-five, right?
One-two-five-point-three-five-zero-three subsection five.
Right, and, and when you read that section, it, you know, the, the gist of what Zach said, or council member Michelle said is correct. It says, following receipt of a request to approve a planned unit development, the body or official responsible for the review and approval shall hold at least one public hearing on the request. So the city council is the actual body responsible for the approval. The, but when you read on in the, a little bit further in that same section, it does, it says zoning ordinance may provide for pre-application conferences before submission of a planning development request and the submission of preliminary site plans before the public hearing. So I do think that the city council needs to hold a formal public hearing. However, it needs to do that before it considers the final site plan. My understanding is this is really the preliminary P U D approval process. So I do think that you should hold a public hearing, but it doesn't have to delay tonight's consideration, unless for some reason that's the will of the council. But you could hold a public hearing prior to the consideration of the final P U D itself and this final P U D site plan.
Thank you for verifying the process.
You're welcome.
Appreciate you being online, waiting for this.
Sure, no problem.
Zach, are you done with your questions?
Yep.
Other council member questions on either what's in the packet or what's inside of the seat?
Sure, you can. Make some comments?
Absolutely, yeah, sure, comments, yes.
So with this, I'm not really sure where to start with all this. I am one of the council members who has been in this area since I was born. Part of why I got elected was because I wanted to keep Dexter, Dexter. And once you sit in this chair and you're on the other side of the table, you realize certain things, that it's, it's not always about you and what you want. Do I want, is this what I would like to see on this piece of property? Hundred percent no. But has this particular developer done everything in their power to respond to the community and listen to our feedback? And try to make it better for us? Yes, I mean, at the end of the day, this is private property. If it were my private property and I were adhering to all the zoning laws, I wouldn't want people telling me what to do. But these, this developer listened. The other thing is, we're not changing the zoning. This is part of, we're not rezoning this property. And I think that some, that that's somewhere lost in translation. What they could put by right on this piece of property could be colder to the creek, could fill up more the property, could be taller, could be louder, could be more traffic intense. So as someone who really didn't ever want to see this there, at a point, I had to sit back and say, it's private property. The city does not have the budget to purchase it. Yeah, I'd love to see it be a vacant lot for the rest of my life. But I wasn't on this board, and, you know, when we were voting on Cityhood, I was living in Dexter Township on my family property. And I, it's just, we can't go back in time, you know? I mean, at that point, there were a lot of decisions made on this property, including annexation, that we can't change. If Township's still on this property, it'd be a different story. But we have a set of laws we have to adhere to. When somebody comes and meets all the laws and those regulations, if it's not something we own, there's not a whole lot we can do. And, yeah, I mean, even though, and I, and at a point too, I have to sit back and I have to listen to the experts. I'm an expert on traffic, development, construction. I mean, you know, I, I know things from being here and listening to the experts. And, yeah, I would a hundred percent prefer a kayak livery or a brewery, even though the experts are telling me, and I believe them, that that is a higher traffic intensity, you know, usage. I would sacrifice that, because also from where I sit, all these traffic arguments, as valid as they are, it's so hard for them to be directed at this body when so much of the traffic is caused by, has been caused by development in the townships. And so I'm not invalidating any of the concerns. I'm just trying to say, as somebody who really cares about all of this, it's not that black and white. And I don't know, that, that's, that's it, I guess.
Derek?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments. I want to acknowledge the appends and the team for all of our work that went into this, all the time you've spent, all of the knowledge and energy and effort you've applied to this. I want to acknowledge all members of the public for their comments here, previous meetings, the email, et cetera. I appreciate the passion on both sides of this project. I also want to thank our city legal council for providing some more authentication regarding what is required by law. Maybe that isn't actually your thing. And so in our supplement, page nine of our supplement, it says, "The exercise of zoning authority is considered a legislative function, and so the review of a proposed P U D is considered more in this vein, which gives council more discretion in evaluating proposed P U D. Nevertheless, council must state its conclusion, decision, and basis for that decision in considering a proposed P U D." Further down, it says, "The review should be based on whether the proposed P U D meets the criteria of these sections." Again, because it's a legislative function, there can be more leeway. It's not like a site plan review where the proposed site plan either meets the regulation or does not. So when I think about all of, with that guidance, the guidance we get from our zoning ordinance, the guidance we get from our master plan, which is referenced and helps to inform the zoning ordinance. Or our master plan reads, "Overall land use goal, foster the responsible use of land, conserve natural features, preserve small town character, make sustainable use of existing public services, utilities and infrastructure." Um, going into natural resource goal that says, "Protect and maintain the city's natural resources, particularly here on river and Mill Creek area." Protect public views and access to Mill Creek from the downtown, land for an investment recreation and open space and develop new parks and a recreation area when opportunities arise. Uh, and then, you know, to the point that, um, sorry, lots of paper here. It also explicitly says in our zoning ordinance here, this is I don't know, I'm on, it's E, something E, planning commission review recommendations. The, the, okay, section nineteen fourteen E, number three. The PUD shall not change the essential character of the surrounding area. And, you know, to echo Zach's points too about the recognizable unmaterial benefits. This is the comment I made at a planning commission meeting to say, um, just to draw attention to the fact that it explicitly says in there that could not be obtained through conventional zoning. So it's not just that they meet those, but that they meet that when a conventionally zoned project would not be able to. And I guess, taken all together, I have a hard time supporting this development in this location for those reasons. I, I think it could look nice somewhere else. What's striking to me is that if you look at, you know, the elevations, as you're approaching, you're coming through downtown, river is, you know, water flows down, so you're heading downhill and things kind of slow down. Or I feel like you hit the creek and that, that creates a new essential character of the area. Where then if you're looking down at the creek and you've got the development behind you and now suddenly you're looking up at it, to me, that is, is out of character with that area, um. I appreciate that it's privately owned property. I, I think there is a better use for it, um. I, I wouldn't, I won't be supporting it on that. Thanks.
Welcome.
Um, so we talked a lot about the master plan. Um, the way I understand it is the master plan gives us the guidance and out of the master plan to get the zoning for a particular person. So this parcel, when it was brought into municipality, I don't remember if it was village or city at the time, was zone B C, was it zone village commercial? So the character of the land that's village commercial is what is proposed. I mean, the zoning ordinance says forty five feet tall, this one's forty seven feet tall. The zoning ordinance says it can cover up to sixty percent of the property. This one covers less than that, closer to forty percent. That's part of the, the benefits that are going into this. This could be a different development. And we talked about this before, I brought this up before, th- there's a, there's a development that could be done here that would be much less appealing, much less attractive, much more imposing and would meet all the ordinances. And also in the letter that we got, that was just referenced a minute ago, um, above that, it talks about site plans, it says, "Under Michigan law, the site plan, one, contains all the information required by the zoning ordinance and two, meets all the requirements of the zoning ordinance and any other technical ordinance, regulation or statute, it must be approved." We would not even have an option if, if a plan was brought in here and it met the ordinance completely and it was ugly as all get out and didn't have any of the features that this development has or any of the benefits that this development has and yet still met the ordinance, we would have to approve it. We would, we simply would have to. And the benefit that we're getting are the things that the planning commission went through, laid out these different items. I agree a hundred percent. You can have a different opinion on whether or not you think those are benefits or not through the site. The planning commission did look at it and they looked at it quite a bit more than I think even we have. But I, I think there are definite benefits to this as opposed to what might be there. And I, I really don't think that the property is gonna stay empty. I just, it, it doesn't make any sense that somebody would buy it, put the money into buying the property, demolishing the building during the cleanup, you know, going through all the development work that's been done, the engineering, all the meetings and the time that's gone into that and then just say, well, we'll just leave it and it, it's gonna get developed somehow. And it can be developed somehow. There, there is no, I mean, worst case scenario is it just goes to what's the village commercial. And I think this is a better plan. This is better than what potentially we could get other lots. Uh, we haven't seen, we have other uses that have been proposed that have not worked out for different reasons. And I understand that, um, I mean, I think that, from what I, what I've heard from the advocates before, I think he wanted to do something different. I think this is what it's come down to is this is the best use that he can use it for at this point in time, so.
Thanks, Bill, you all said.
Thank you, um. Well, I think a lot of the, the things that I wanted to reference, the reference ones were set by Roger, even Zach and Jamie. Um, where I want to acknowledge and appreciate the public engagement in, in this. Um, we have received many emails, we have, I, I have read a lot of your comments on social media. You have engaged us in person, um, I've even seen the, the, um, petition that has been going around. Um, and I think, um, it is very heartwarming to see the interest not only from the residents of the city of Dexter, but also the surrounding communities, um. I am yes newer to the city of Dexter. I did chose Dexter because of its character. Um, I have no intentions of making this a big city. I, I am from a big city that to comparison Dexter is a tiny dot on a map. And I chose Dexter because of, of its feel, um, because of its community. And I think, um, I really appreciate the engagement because I believe that the sense of community when we share our opinions in a respectful manner, in a thoughtful manner, listen to each other and even if the, the opinions are differ, that we assume good intent on everybody that is bringing it. I, I agree that when I am as a resident and when I sit at this table, I have to make different considerations. I am at this table because I wanted to serve this community. So in, in some sense, I want to ask that if you and everybody is wanting us to consider their opinion with the best, best intent for the community, I would appreciate the same, same consideration. Um, there have been a lot of things set on social media that is, is very heartbreaking. There are a couple of things I want to clarify. I know they have been set, but I would like to reiterate. This is a pro- private property. This is not a city-owned property. People can come with a lot of ideas of, oh, it would be great for it to be parked. It would be great for it to be a restaurant. It would be great for it to be a brewery. Some might even like for it to go back into that escorting goods and shooting buildings next to the park. All good. What is coming at front of this body is what needs to be considered because it is a private property. And council member Sammy Faro just mentioned, what can be put in this property by right can be something that is a lot more horrendous. I think this is horrendous, but it is a horrendous project. It's something that we really would hate to see and we have absolutely no legal way of stopping that. We could spend millions of dollars in litigation and in lawsuits and have nowhere to go. In front of us, we have a project that it might not, might not be the favorite of many of us, but it's a project that even in this preliminary phase of it, the developer has listened a lot, has changed the project a lot, has brought a landscape architect to a level of detail that we seldom see in any other project to this level of it. So this is not a developer that has come and said, I will take you to court and I build the ugliest thing I want to build just because I can. This has been a developer that has come to us to say, I listened to you, I reshaped the development, I understand you might not like it fully, but this is the best we can offer and we are listening and we are putting something in front of you that hopefully is better than what it could be. So we, we have options. We can say no to this and wait for something to come that is, we have absolutely no say in it and is as ugly as it can be. Or we can look at what is at front of us and see if there is a good potential with this. The other thing that has gone around a lot is about the traffic. The roundabout is nothing that the city of Dexter can do about. It is put in place and the project owner is the Washington Arwo Commission. So it is not us. I don't, I'm not a big fan of roundabouts in general. I can't do anything about it. Also, I've mentioned ninety percent of the daily traffic through that area is out to the townships. I personally have not gone to any township board to oppose any development because of the traffic they're creating for the downtown of city of Dexter. Cause I think that the boards and the residents should have that conversation and go based on what is best for that township. Also, the residential area of the twenty eight homes causes a lot less traffic than a commercial building, even the brewery, even with the same number of parking spots. A brewery that can turn traffic every hour for forty or fifty parking spots, that's a lot more traffic between three P M and ten P M or eleven P M than a residential home. Um, and as Zach mentioned, the type of people that might live there will have less traffic than, for example, my household would have. So I'm a library. I sit at the table not just for this or work or anything and go into understanding all points of view and what comes to me based on the expert's decision, based on the history that has put in place, based on what are your opinions. We have also received support for this. And one of my neighbors actually approached me and said that they support this project, but they don't feel that they can't put something up on the social media. They are seeing all the opposition to it, which is totally fine. But they felt concerned that they would be attacked for just saying the support for it. And it makes me sad. It makes me sad that we can't have voice for everybody at times. I want to have voice for everybody. And that's why I do appreciate even all those people that signed the petition that are not the residents of the city of Dexter and some of you are here tonight. I do appreciate it. So for me, as I'm looking at this project and I'm looking at the comments and I actually attended the planning commission because I wanted to firsthand see what are the comments and what are the points that they are considering and recommending to this body for approval. They unanimously sent this our way. They considered the PUD, they considered the zoning, they considered the, what can be on this site. And for me, those will all come in, in my consideration of this. And a lot of it has to do with, again, that this might not be the best thing we think could happen on this property, but it's something at front of us that first and foremost, we need to consider. And also it can be a lot worse. And there are people, developers, that are not disconsiderate to even change in this setting so much of it to consider the, the opinion of, of the people. Um, and one last comment, I think that growth to some level, and I have said this before, a sustainable growth is healthy. We can't just not have growth. It will, Washtona is growing. If we are not engaging in a sustainable, meaningful way with it, it will pass us. And we will not be the vibrant community that the restaurants want to come open here or the, the stores want to come open here and people want to participate. But those are the things I'm considering and I appreciate your time.
No problem, you're welcome. And, and then?
Yes, um, thank you all for coming. I appreciate all your opinions. Um, I appreciate the first time we had a bunch of Westridge people here and I think our developer has done a pretty good job in trying to, to, to meet some of the, the stuff that was talked about. I'm the other council member that's been here a long time. Um, I'm fifty eight years old. I've bought, worked in the city for thirty seven years. I've been through Westridge, Dexter Crossing, Geron Farm. I've been through a lot. This chat, this town has changed a lot. With this development this proposed in front of us, I don't believe that's gonna have that big an impact, um, on the traffic in town. I think that, uh, there's a lot of, a lot of building going outside of town. We got the lakes that used to be cottages when I was a kid and now they're multimillion dollar homes. Um, so the traffic is going to be an issue whether this goes up or it doesn't go up. I really like this. I think that other options that could come later that Joe has pointed out and Sanam, I think, um, it could, it could be, it, it wouldn't look like this. I'm gonna support this project. I think that the public benefit with the water main is huge. It just doesn't support Westridge. It also supports Cedars out there, um. Thank you. Yeah, I'll, I'll go left. I will ask you what you go.
Oh, and just for this, to piggyback off that really quickly because part of, part of my trepidation with supporting this at the beginning was I didn't really think that they were showing material benefit to the community with the water. And I thought there was a lot of talk about how that would provide future annexation. And I want to be clear right now that the reason why I have, the more I thought about it, supported the water as a material benefit is because of what Dan just said. I have no intention of, I would never support future annexation. That's not who I am. I'm not, I'm not for making this city bigger. I'm not for expanding into style. It's just not me. It's, I, I'm open space and all of that. But again, it goes back to, they are saying, that combined with the creek bank stuff that they put forward, I can't deny that they're doing some really important things on their property, which wouldn't be done if it's that vacant even. And as much as I would like it to be open space, I, we, you know, we're at a point, what do you do?
What's that?
Yeah.
So I just want everybody to do, I want to echo a few things I don't
So I just want everybody to do, I want to echo a few things I don't want to repeat every point, um. I received a lot of emails on this. I've received a lot of comments just talking around down on this. I want to vote for this. It looks nice to me. It looks really nice. Um, when we were planning the Mill Creek Park, taking the dam out and planning what the shoreline could look like, we couldn't do anything because the creek on the other side, it wasn't our property. If you go along the banks over there, there's broken concrete that's been dumped there. That's holding that, that's both to be prevented already, way it's now. And there's, there's metals that are along the bank as well. Um, we have a, we have a partner here, a community that has the post office in that I think is bringing a lot of good. Is it perfect? Few things are. Few things are perfect. But I don't think you should let very good get in the way of it. And, um, so I don't feel forced to vote for this. I think that our ordinances have done exactly what they have been laid out to do. I think our planning commission and our staff and our consultants have done an excellent job of working through those requirements that we've all voted for at one time or another. Um, yeah, and I haven't been here as long as you, but I'm on, going on my twenty-third year. I don't know when you get to be long enough. I don't know who determines that from two years to whatever, but we're all residents here. I like the way this looks and I want to vote for it. And I'm not afraid to say that. I want everybody here to know that. Um. That being said, I don't think this means that there's going to be condos all up and down Mill Creek. There's very, very few, called parcels in this town. Very few. This one happens to be a very deep one. It's got a challenge. Um, there's been some commitments being made, proposed, as Dan mentioned, the water main is a huge public benefit. Uh, cleaning up the creek and protecting the creek. There's excellent site design in what Gary talked about. I'm a someone here, I'm a lousy landscape architect, but I work with them all the time. Makes a lot of sense. All these lower plants, strong root structures, native to the area. Makes a lot of sense to meet part of our goals of restoring the river and the creeks. And this doesn't change our goal of being connected to nature. I mean, all of this started with the vision of creating a park. I heard people talk today about Chelsea and what they're doing in the industry and how they're going to try and put a park in downtown. I'll tell you why. They don't have a park in downtown. And, and they want, you know, but they want, now that's not bad. You don't, not every town has to do it hurt. But we, we are building on our park. We've added to our trail system. We've, we're continuing, I think, to try and add to the trail system and access to Chelsea. I just think this is really good and, um.
Yeah.
I, I, I also will say that, uh, if we need to hold a public hearing at this board, uh, we will do that as part of the process. I want to make sure that we go through that again. It's actually uncovered something that we won't plan it to do, to make sure that the developer understands that needs to be done. Michelle and Sher will be all, all over that and make sure you do the right steps. But I'm happy to have another public hearing, whatever it is. So with that, I'm planning to support it. George, we have a motion by Sammy Faro and second by Aldag for motion number one that was on page one thirty-eight and one thirty-nine of the packet. To approve. Please call the vote to approve.
Aldag, yes. Michelle's?
No.
Sammy Faro?
Yes.
Griffin? No. Schla?
Yeah.
Hubbard? Yes. Kie?
Yes. Motion carries five to two on the preliminary site plan for better beauty development. Um, we are on to number three, which is discussion slash consideration of the Sloan-Kinsley property.
We put on the next agenda, the meeting.
Sorry.
Motion by Michelle. Second by Albert to vote on. Should we wait? Yeah, just the next agenda?
Yep.
Oh, the next agenda?
To the next.
The next meeting.
The next meeting.
Yeah.
The whole of the next agenda.
Oh, yes, yes. That's what I'm saying.
Very, very distracting. No, that's good. That's right. That's good.
I was just asking because my life, because I just don't under, like, the, so if the area that we've got a zone is commercial, right? And, yeah, I'm sorry. I should, I keep, can we?
Come back to that.
Yeah, oh, yeah. I have, I get dumb, like.
Go ahead. Okay. The other comments to vote on. Please go with one and two go on.
But?
Yeah.
Aldag? Yeah. Michelle?
Yes.
Hubbard? Yes. Sammy Faro?
Yes.
Griffin? No. Kie?
No. Motion carries five to two, so that will be on our December eleventh agenda. Stay here, right?
Uh, we don't want to finish. Probably go down there.
Sorry. Uh, last item on the new business site is discussion of the bicentennial celebration. Just all done. It's over you.
I've heard of Josh.
All right.
Still different data here. Good evening, Council.
Those who are still in the audience. Um, so I, I have, in front of you, I have an item to begin the discussion for the Dexter Bicentennial Carnival. Um, this was a concept that our public heritage has been looking at and the Bison has been looking at for a few months now um, as a part of one of our larger projects for the celebration. Uh, one of the other ones we're looking at is planned, that is kind of a side different items. Uh, but some of the background that I have on here and I'll go through it pretty quickly is that more recent, uh, last couple of weeks, we have met with Wade Shows, who is the carnival provider that we have been discussing with, doing the carnival. Um, they do some other bigger shows, Michigan, Bologna Spree, it's going back to the, their little board carnival. Um. But we did a site walk with Wade Shows and Mike from Wade Shows and looked at the sites, which we were originally looking at for potentially on Main Street and Central Street from, uh, Main to Fifth. Um, and originally in that concept, the thought was to be able to keep it as consolidated downtown so that, um, outside of being able to enjoy the carnival and, you know, within, you know, by the park on those streets would also be allow people to go into the businesses and promote it there. Uh, but after doing that site walk and kind of looking at the different options on what might be feasible infrastructure wise to also host that carnival, we, uh, the current concept that I have in front of you is looking at closing Central Street from Main all the way to Fourth Street. Um, so in previous events, you know, such as Dexter Days, they currently close, um, Central between Main and Fifth. And so our thought would be to extend it just an additional block, um, build towards some of those rides um, that Wade Shows has proposed. Um, looking at my item, unfortunate, it will be on the last page, looking at the map. Uh, it's kind of a preliminary, kind of raw mockup that Mike has provided staff where they'll compare it with you. Uh, just some of where the ride locations are. Um, a couple of the things that we would move kind of out of, we'd move a few things out of Monument Park just because I do know a few other events are still being planned for that area. So just try to decongest that, um, as a, as a part of the event. Um. Kind of looking through, you know, looking through here, vote, like I said, you know, most of it's going to be consolidated, um, bigger ride wise, um, along Central Street, uh, and then putting maybe what Ferris wheel is a little larger or another larger ride on the corner, um, as we kind of, a few words are kind of saying, um. A follow-up or things. Okay. Uh, one of the benefits, um, of the Wade Shows, um, kind of contracting with them versus, um, the other concept, which was, would be the city going out and kind of contracting with multiple vendors to do different rides. Was that Wade Shows is why I, I, I wanted a proper carnival. So basically what we do is we contract with Wade Shows. We do not pay them to come in and do it. Uh, but what they do is they come in, they charge, you know, wristband, which we typically see at a carnival. Uh, we did, we should also do, you know, maybe sponsoring a specific rides. Just Ferris wheel would be something that we'll talk about. Uh, but that's more of a down the road kind of discussion. Uh, but that's kind of what it looks like on the cost end. Uh, the only things that, you know, with, when it comes to the parade or to the carnival will be, you know, they might have access to, to public water, we would put meters on there. And as I mentioned in the memo, they had mentioned potentially a ten percent revenue sharing. Um, but I, but that, again, that would be something that we'd talk of, you know, council is, you know, what is, um, interested in continuing to do this as a project. Um. So attached to this memo, I have the road closure permit again from Central between Main and Four. And I don't know if there's anything else I should, I should touch on.
Yeah, so, yeah, I think the, the big, big kind of highlights are that, uh, we, we wouldn't really, Wade Shows would be costing more for the city and that we, you know, wanted to, it was something to, you know, say, make a ride free for this X period of time. Um, but, um, one of the considerations is that we, we'd have to, uh, find a way to host the carnival workers for, you know, that, that extended weekend, um, whether it be, you know, making a city lot available, um, for their RVs and other, uh, parking needs. Uh, because essentially they're, they're living in the town that they are working in at any given time. And so I think that's, that's going to be the biggest hurdle, um, to that sort of event. But, um, this is, if, if, if council is supportive, um, this is kind of, we're going to be moving it. If it helps, but doesn't like this idea, then, um, we invite something else.
So how many people do we have to hope? How many workers are there at a carnival? Let's try to get an idea about this site.
So I don't have the exact number on the amount of people that I believe that are looking at, you know, some of the trailers and RVs. I believe the number that was preliminarily thrown out there was like twenty to thirty. And I think the combination of like their RVs as well as like trailers for transporting quite that.
But twenty, thirty people?
Are twenty, that's all, I'm not sure of the number of people. I, I was saying, the number of trailers and RVs could range from twenty to thirty.
Okay.
For people, I mean, I presume that they probably have at least.
So, and then I guess my other thought is there's a proposed timeline on here. You know, um, I realize that bici panels happen once over two hundred years, but, um, you know, like Dexter Days is two days long. It's Friday and Saturday. This, this is supposed to start on Thursday. Would they still do it? It was only two days?
I, 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 I think they, they, they need a certain amount of time to, to make it compatible for that.
Okay, but what do they charge for a wristband?
I am not sure exactly how it's calculated.
Okay, these are the kind of questions that I, I usually, um, I, I would prefer that they do not start on Saturday at the same time that the parade is going on.
Yeah.
So at ten o'clock start, I would think you'd wait until after the parade because that's another event I'm highlighting. Uh, I think there should be competition between those events. Hopefully they both do that.
Yeah, and I think their, their preferences to probably are.
And I, and I do like the ten o'clock stop instead of, I don't think it should be longer. But that is relative there. Yeah. Those are my thoughts. All right. Yeah, none of this is going to be on Main Street.
So, so we, we were originally looking at Main Street and, uh, through conversation with, uh, E W and other folks, um, closing it and rerouting truck traffic would be challenging. Um, that combined with, you know, Main Street being the parade route and all the traffic on other events. Um, we felt that it would be challenging to, to close Main Street for, for that extended period of time. And so, yeah, it would just be the normal like Dexter Day closure at Central Street, but then going up to four or three rather than that.
Well, uh, so let's see that, um, if we, as a body, decide we want to learn more about this, the D F D, then the fair could be consulted next. Do we have any sort of historical precedent with D A F D for closing that much of Central and what that, I mean, maybe I'm ahead of kind of schedule here, but that would be a concern to me in terms of the viral runs out to Webster. Um, and so somebody's going to have to pay to heavily medicate my dog. And I guess that would be me.
So I, I, I would think chances are, um, uh, for D A F D's purposes, I, I, you know, I Doug, correct me if I'm wrong, but they would probably take Ryan if they're, if they're heading out, heading out towards Webster.
Oh, that would drop right, basically. All right.
Yeah.
Dan, how about the residents and their impact with the fire damage?
Yeah, so part, part of that, um, you know, I, I'm looking to put out a letter to the residents along there just to let them know that this is, you know, could potentially be a project that is proposed and just to be able to give them the opportunity to reach out and ask any question, you know, with preliminary information we have uh, kind of highlighted in this. And that'd be something, uh, with, with support, there's support behind the project. That would do basically beginning in a sense.
Because there is no part of you in that, the resident. This is closed to everybody except the Bison Fang.
Um, there, there are only a handful of residents that access the driveways off of Central Street. Most access off of the alley, um, just off of Central Street. Um, and so we, we would have a kind of a work with residents to, you know, make sure they have access.
And another nice, uh, nice part about kind of the timing of the carnival as well is that for waste management accessing, um, any of the alleyways, that should not be affected by this carnival.
Yeah, um, what waste management first on Monday would be, would be affected.
So did you bring your actual intentions to the front? Right there? Dan? So I've got to experience a carnival as part of the festival since I moved to Shepherd in nineteen eighty-one. Even when I haven't lived there and gone back, very exciting thing, the first year I lived there, it was the street right next to my house. I could see it from my bed. Um. So I have, I'm shocked and have a lot of questions. Is there any reason why we haven't talked with like the Elliott or Arnold or Durant?
Or those other carnival companies? So the reason that I, uh, we really started the negotiation, or just that negotiations, but the conversation with Wade Shows is that the information was shared for me from one of our Bicentennial members. Is why I reached out to Wade Shows and just by happenstance that I talked to him. So I have not contacted.
Again, if we're not spending money, we don't have to go through multiple bits type stuff.
And, and also, uh, Wade Shows has, they do have availability that we've had. Uh, I'm not sure at, at this point, um, you know, seven months away, if any other vendors would, would potentially still have availability.
Uh, do they have a minimum date? A minimum money that they have to make? Generally, if they come in, they'll say they're going to do it for free, but if we make less than a hundred thousand dollars, you have to make the gap.
So they have mentioned that they tried to shoot for the hundred thousand, but they have never mentioned anything about us covering any of it.
It's important because that's, it rains in some, you know, of the project. Um, where's the generator truck going? Let's see it on here.
I know that they have a couple more generators in here. Um, it's looking like.
Okay.
That's the food I think there.
Oh, it's like. My eyes are tired. It looked like cucumber. Uh, although you, you put the wires in there, you get electric, no, that's potatoes, right?
Yeah.
Um, the people, you're going to have to find a way to make them happy because the sound will be awful. I know there are people that would leave town because they were across the park from where the riots were. Whether it's pre wristbands or something, we're going to have to make sure that we're happy because it's going to be a significant inconvenience. And, yeah, my observations are that four days is the minimum to show up and, and make their bank. Um, carnivals are good if we bring more people in, um, if done well.
But, and then ultimately our goal was to not compete with, with, uh, restaurants and other businesses downtown. But, uh, and here that I've heard, uh, come out of town.
Well, I don't think anyone sells stallatiers downtown, so it's different. It's a different cuisine.
I guess that's the feedback. Anybody else want to say anything or ask a question? Okay.
Sure.
What was it?
I've said I don't like caramel rice.
But, uh, I don't think we're hearing, uh, uh, please note, don't do that.
Cause.
Many of you didn't know what was on second floor, so maybe. I'm not quite there yet.
Especially Zach, kind of, he's going to be helping us with the generator and did something about that.
Basically trailer car. I'm not like your dad. Okay, thank you, Josh, for your work on that. And glad for the answers to those questions. Um, we'll move over to page four of the agenda, non-arranged participation. Are there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on a non-arranged?
And we speak about anything?
About it. Yeah, you will.
Well, as far as the carnival thing goes, couldn't you talk to like the region and the people over there? They're not so. Well, as far as the carnival thing goes, couldn't you talk to, like, the Legion and the D C while we're over there, where it's not so, like, the government?
Good suggestion. Anyone else in the audience want to speak on a non-arranged? Is there anyone online that would like to speak on a non-arranged? Josh, help me with the hand doing?
I currently don't have any hands for it, so.
Okay, thank you for verifying that. We are down to council comments, I will start with our two soon rounds, you ready, go on, or Bonnie?
Oh, true, um. Before our next meeting, um, the Sunday before, there is a joint concert with the Dexter Community Orchestra and, um, the Dexter Hateful Chamber Orchestra. It should be pretty good, it's a holiday celebration, everyone is welcome, um, and go Blue, good one on Saturday. Really enhance the holiday season for me, hopefully, for others who are being.
Thank you all, tell, tell that to Paul right there, is that it?
Um. Uh, I know a lot of people don't like the snow, but I, I was told that it wasn't going to snow all this year, which I think I said, so, so around Thanksgiving or over the line Thanksgiving break. Uh, that made me happy, um, my, it was not so dry, um. Um, and also I just want to, uh, I don't know, appreciate the fact that, like, council, uh, sits for like. Four hours every weekend and considers everyone's problems, which, um, I think, I mean, obviously you were outside of that too. But, um, uh, just sitting here like watching, I'm like, wow, this is not super easy, so good for you, for Gary.
Everybody, Joe?
Um, one item that was in the package that I should have brought up earlier, um, was the, uh, drawings and the. Layouts for the, um, the latest design that was done for the fire station, um. The point we're at in that they are moving forward to getting a budget, the. Sort of got the design to where they think it's, um, in good shape. The, the latest iteration was essentially taking a chair out and then basically shrinking the building. The fire station personnel, um, and optimizing that. So, um, they're beginning that process, um, I know there were some questions about. Sp- specifics on technical, mechanical, that kind of stuff, if there's those type of questions, this is the time to definitely submit them, get in, um, sent back. Um, I think, okay, stay sent to you, Justin, um, so that we can get that feedback back over, um. The plan right now is for the second meeting in December that a, uh. We would have that information back, basically the first cut on, uh, the budget for, um. The, the layouts as they are in the package there, um, and there's. There's, there's a couple of parts, there's the, the first, the upstairs, which is the main part of the five bays, and then down below, there's the two bays. And then also the, um, area where the, uh. Public bathrooms are go, and where the elevator stairs are go. So those other part, those downstairs parts are the optional parts, those are the parts that, you know, um. The recommendation or the feeling from the committee to recommend that council was that the downstairs bays were, uh, important and a priority, um. The hope is that what we discussed last time, that we talked about this, with, with the moving of the sheriff's department. With the going from six bays to five bays, that those things were going to offset the, some of the costs that we'd have of putting the bays, uh, the two bays downstairs. And so, if there's any comments, questions, suggestions, um, comments, anything. Now is the time to really get them in so that if there's anything that has to be updated or, um, evaluated further, this is the time. Because they're going to start doing that, uh, evaluation on a budget basis so that they can bring it back to us for further direction.
Do we have to pick what else was out? Was it, there were like seven or eight different views of, of where the sign is and where it says Dexter Fire, and whether there's. Window or not a window, and I, I don't think we have to pick one, but David did a discussion of that.
I think what David did was he put in a lot of different variants so that you could get an idea of what different things there might be. But there was a lot of discussion about where it should say Dexter, where it shouldn't, which was the front door that he wanted people to go, or he didn't want people to go. That kind of stuff, so, no, I don't think those type of things are.
Well, I, but if, if you have preferences from those different models, if you, if you like this, go like that.
Yeah, I, 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 what I was going to say is, if we're down to that level of detail, because all I was looking for is the same to me. I mean, the shell is the shell, it's just a bunch of little, the brick over the top, and then you lift, lift it else the top. I'd start thinking those are very important. Before that level of detail. Where they can provide their. Input.
Yeah, and, and, and we, we, um, impose upon David the need to start. Or covering those materials for planning.
Yeah, okay, good, twenty percent left.
Can we, can we put those, the, the drawings we have now, put them in the planning packet for, for the house?
For just, we like one, two, or the, whatever, I can do it, data.
I can try to attend and answer these questions, well, so, Dan.
That's my, uh.
Okay, all done, I'm kind of staying with this, I don't know. Um, one other thing, we, um, part of the discussion that we had tonight about the color of property, um. One of the things that struck me as we went through all that was that zoning was village commercial, and. We've been talking also about the potential for, um, potentially annexing some land from Zytown, Jeff and half a kindness here tonight, um. I really think that what we should look at and do is figure out how we're going to have public input on that. Because if that land were to get annexed in, we're going to decide what that zoning is going to be, that zoning input, if we decide. You know, we decided we wanted to be an extension of extra crossing, that should be decided beforehand, if we decide that we want affordable housing, that should be decided ahead of time. I think we should get that input so that it informs us on how we should look at what that zoning is going to be. Because that zoning is eventually going to turn into whatever gets built there, so.
The plan? That's all.
Well, uh, yeah, Jordan, I request that what I'm going to say will be put in the comments. Um, I just want to say that this was another meeting where it was really difficult for me to be on this side of the table, as somebody who. Is also a human being and private citizen of the city of Dexter, um, it's a tough spot when you have to. Follow the law and vote on something that you don't necessarily personally believe in, but that is what I signed up for. When I put my name on the ballot and read it for worse. It's what I got to do. I would also like to say that the city newsletter that went out recently had my phone number incorrect on it. So I would like to let everyone know that that is a phone number I haven't had in years. Um, I say this primarily because. I encourage everyone to call me anytime they want to talk about anything, it's, it's how I would rather interact with the public than sitting here at the table when I can't answer questions. And I can't help direct advocacy in a way that, you know, like, that I think is. Helpful, um, for you guys to have your voices heard, so my phone number is nine zero six, three six zero, six five nine five. And you don't have to put this down, but that is not a seven three four, but you can have a phone number wherever you want, I guess. I was born in climate township, grew up Dexter township, I just have a U P phone number because I'm weird.
Thank you. Dan? Lynn?
I don't have to be held up.
Dan? Yeah, just having one string over there is really gross, oh, boy. Those of us on the side of the table, I'm not going to public, and that needs to be, I, I don't know that these are going to be big enough to be. Um, eligible for anyone in the front row, um, so if we're going to have folks here, we need to make, we need them for us, that's. We're even participating in, in seeing what we're talking about, uh. Let's see. We don't get a lot of applications before us, and I get to speak on, on the experience of working in lake communities, I had twelve. Variances in front of them every month, and we only had thirty minutes because they locked the room at a certain point in time and they kicked us out. We. I think we could have gotten to the same point with being tighter on reminding folks, you got five minutes, make your points, a lot of folks started to repeat. And same thing with the applicants, we don't need thirty minutes to hear the detail of the species of. Brass that they're planting, if we have questions, we can ask the details, I know people don't like to work, talk about rules, but, um. I was able to run Z B A meetings where the applicant presented in five minutes, very ill to present all the materials in the package that we can ask follow up questions, um. It, it could have been a lot quicker, um, and I will say my, my apologies to my council member neighbor down the block, I didn't. I don't want, mean to imply anything with the smoking, Julie, I, I heard that on the radio and it kind of stuck with me. Um, for me, attendance at these meetings, at our scheduled meetings, it is important, you know, we, we do give up. This block of time when we decide to run, and, um, it's important for us to be here to boot the business, and if we're off. Because we're doing, uh, National Guard, or we're called away for work, or there's a family emergency, that is different than if I just want to fly to Fiji for two months or something, um. And that's something that I do try to walk the talk, I believe since two thousand fifteen December, I missed one regular meeting. And that's because I had a planning conference in New York that week that took me out of town. So I'm, my apologies again, I didn't mean to imply anything, I was just trying to make light with the whole room of tense people. But, right, how's that, we have an hour of public comment, we got all people's heart. You can do the math. Ma'am, did you have a question, I'm sorry, I haven't called that.
Yeah, I was going to ask the, if the fire truck, I was talking about the fire department, did they ever figure out the fire truck that's going to be able to reach forty seventeen, does that? Do you have one?
We do not have one.
Wow.
We do not, we do not have, no.
So that's.
We have, we have ranges of other departments, neighboring departments that have one, but we do not have one.
So, you know, they've handled their fire neighborhood, they have to come and put it out?
Yeah, mutual aiders, council, all players, neighboring, we leave multiple departments in it, it's like, it's like we would define zone now. Like the sub, the suppression in the building will help. You heard the fire chief say that, I'm happy to talk more about that, I did.
That, that would want you to mind what.
Thank you. Okay, uh, any additional proposed agenda items for future meetings?
Oh, yeah, that tax amendment, I was sorry, Rob, that Zach brought up to clarify the industrial, they need friends. Sorry, that's not the theory. Not the actual way to put it, but I think you know what I mean.
Yeah, and to clarify that you need hearing requirements. Good.
I have one suggestion, so, a few meetings back, we heard from, I, I think it's a student, we're up to planning commission, you talked about our field goal, sorry, Jamie. Uh.
Yeah, I'm, so, you didn't.
I was also thinking we have state champion expert debate team members, member, uh, um, council. So I had a meeting chat with Bonnie, I don't know if she or somebody else on the executive meeting would be interested in doing a short presentation on logical fallacy.
A what is your?
A logical fallacy.
Oh.
I almost demoted on statistics, but I reclaim myself.
A presentation, I mean, I were welcome to. Um, but I, I just think for procedure making body, I think it would be a nice type of refresher. But that could be, yeah, however we, something like that.
Okay, I'll see you tomorrow, good journey. Oh, you have something, a, a job there? Yeah, uh, are we going to recognize the field hockey team sometime soon?
Yeah, we're, I, I.
All right, uh, the other one is, it, it's more a chart, it's not necessarily this, but a chart is the planning commission, since we. Disbanded the tree board and they're the entity responsible for trees for our ordinance. We really need to get, um, start thinking about tree management, I know we've got the plan and this, these are the areas that we're going to trim. But we have a lot of frigging pear trees in our neighborhoods, and it's going to cost a lot of money to take them down and replace them. And we need to start figuring that now, um, so I guess not us, but us to charge for them.
Yeah, so, so what, what chart is now, uh, oh, sorry, incorporated in the tree work?
The other tree commission. Right, Donald, thanks, for actually doing that. Okay, motion for adjournment, please.
I'm on.
And, is there sex? Second, nice note, all of the players, is it by this?
Yeah, it's fine.
Have a good, I'll be right back, we'll see you in December.